All right, being that it's six, let's go ahead and get started. Uh, hold on, I just. Okay, Lisa, she'll be here by six thirty. All right, for anybody who wants to know why, she's dealing with a surge at the hospital. There you go. All right, so let's uh, let's call the order, the city council work session for August second, twenty twenty one. Um, a roll call, there is an agenda in Spanish on the website, so please check that out, um, and then otherwise, let's have a roll call, please, Sue.
Um, for the record, Councilman McBride is on vacation this evening, so he is absent. Counselor Cofield. Bryce.
Sorry, here.
Uh, Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
And, uh, Councilor Noel Holloman will be coming late.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, council agenda and meeting, any items, folks, that you'd like to discuss prior to the business session? I just have one, and we'll do, when we get to it, it's a consent calendar, I don't have anything to say, I just want to comment regarding it, but I don't want to pull it off consent. So if that's okay, I'll just make a comment afterwards.
I have something to. Um, Spanish, and when, there's no Spanish when you call in, of course, we don't have anyone to answer the phone, but there's just. It's just English when you call in.
Okay, I thought we were, at one point, we were talking about having simultaneous translating or something, I thought.
Uh, we're in the process, uh, there's a company we've talked to that can supposedly can do that service, I think we're, um, through community engagement, we're working on a contract with them, and that they would also provide, uh, translation services that's paid for, or AKA predictable for, uh, staff and, and the public when they call in, uh, so I can check in on the progress on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else for the agenda and meeting, folks? All right, what about business items? Anything on business items for this evening? All right, well then, with that, let's move on to the presentations, item five A, it is my very, great pleasure to introduce Mr. Dave Hagerberg, who has been the champion of that thing we call the bypass for decades now, and, uh, Mr. Hagerberg, it's a pleasure, we're delighted to have you here, and thank you so much for your time, and I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, I want to tell you what a pleasure it is to be a part of this conversation. By way of background, I've been Chair of the Yamhill County Parkway Committee for, uh, in fact, uh, something over thirty years. And as a part of that, uh, you should know that one of the things that I hold very dear is the fact, while people's connect me with McMinville, I do not live in McMinville, I have a business in McMinville, but I live in rural Yamhill County, and I represent Yamhill County, and I represent the people of Yamhill County. Uh, it's a county committee, but my job and the job of the Parkway Committee is to look out for the interest of everybody in the county, and in fact, as is turning out for an entire region from our area clear to the central Oregon coast, so, uh, with that bit of background, I, I want to tell you that it is with a considerable amount of excitement that I come here tonight to talk to you about the status of the development of the bypass project and the opportunities that we have. Uh, many of you know that it's been a long challenge, and for a long time, people thought that all of us on the Parkway Committee, including you, Mayor Rogers and the prior mayors, uh, were the greatest optimists in the world, but didn't have touch with reality because didn't think it would ever happen. Well, what I want to talk to you tonight is to just bring you up to date on some of the things that, about the bypass project, and to, to give you a, a more complete perspective of what we're doing, where the project stands, both in terms of of development, but in terms of funding, and then the opportunities that we have to move forward with funding on the bypass, and what it's going to take in, in the judgment of the committee and myself to make that happen, and so I'm not going to ask you to vote on anything, I'm not going to ask you to commit it on anything, but just to be better informed as I go around, I spoke with the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners last Thursday. Tomorrow night, I meet with the City Council of Dundee, and on the tenth, I meet with the City Council of McMinville, and the Tribal Council is preparing, and Denise Harvey, who is on the Parkway Committee, and who is a member of the Confederated Tribal Council, is arranging for me to have a conversation with the Tribal Council, so. This project has happened because of an incredible amount of cooperation by a lot of entities and a lot of people, and one of the key players, obviously, has been the City of Dundee and your council and your mayor. You have several members of the count, of your council that are on the Parkway Committee, as does Dundee and McMinville, the county, and so, we also have a number of private individuals, and as a part of this incredible coordination and cooperation, we are here where we are today, so, having told you that, I think you may also have received a copy of a four-page brochure that gives you some background about the project, where it stands, and what we need to do to move it forward. So as I talked about, I'm going to talk about it in three pieces, one of them is phase one. That's the piece from New, from Dundee, just at the Fisher, we call it, over and around Newburgh, Highway two nineteen. Phase two goes from two nineteen back up and connects the bypass to ninety-nine W at Rex Hill, and phase three is the portion that goes from Dayton to Dundee, so, with that, I can tell you that phase one, and you know, has been built, uh, it was a combination of funding from the federal, state, and local and tribal dollars, and, you know, we got a quite a bit of money from the federal government, uh, the state legislature appropriated a hundred and ninety-two million for the project. But the key, the thing that really made it come together, was the fact that all of the local jurisdictions all unanimously agreed that in order to make that work, and because it was a part of the cooperation with the state and with the Department of Transportation, that we come up with a match, you all provided twenty million dollars to make that happen on phase one, and that was made up by, I can tell you, the county put in a little over ten million dollars. Uh, Newburgh put in, uh, two point two million, McMinville was three point two, Dundee was about three hundred and fifteen thousand, and then the tribe put up four million dollars, and traded a tribe with council, so, so that was a very came in on time and under budget. One of the things that happened with that budget was, as a result of the savings on the phase one that's been built, there's been about twenty-seven or eight million dollars of savings that have gone in, all of the jurisdictions that had money in in phase one, have voted unanimously to use those dollars rather than as project savings and getting them back to put them into phase two, which is two nineteen to Rex Hill, City of Newburgh was a part of that. About two and a half million of those dollar savings from phase one literally are the monies of the local jurisdictions and the Confederated Tribal Council, so, so you all are already participants in a local match with respect to helping fund phase two. Well, phase two has been, uh, so far, a, a very interesting study and success, let me tell you that the legislature put up money to do the engineering and design of phase two, and in fact, it's underway. The engineering firm, David Evans and Associates, that's doing that design, tells us that they will have completed the design up to a fifty percent design level by the end of November, first of December, and you say, well, why fifty percent, not a hundred percent? Because typically, ODOT goes to a fifty percent design level, they are at that level, are pretty confident with respect to price, and they do go to a hundred percent design level, when they have the money for construction, and so the other part of that was, there was the requirement to have money to buy all of the right away, and those project savings were primarily devoted to two things, one is to make the reconnection of Wilsonville with the bypass, Wilsonville Road that you now have. The second part was to buy right away, so, design to the fifty percent level and right away acquisition for phase two has been funded, and that's a great step. So, that's about a fifty million dollar investment so far in phase two. What does it take to get the construction dollars that, you know, you can look at numbers all over the board, and somewhere, let's just say it's a hundred and sixty million dollars for construction. One of the things becomes relevant after a while, as you'll see, is is when ODOT designs, and right now, they estimate that dollar cost of the construction of phase two, they include a forty percent contingency factor for all kinds of things, so that, that hundred and sixty million or whatever, includes forty percent of it, you know, for cost things that they don't know may happen. I think the Parkway Committee and even the folks at ODOT will tell you that as they get closer and further into design, those, those unknowns go down significantly, and we think the price will drop somewhat. But having said that, then the question is, is how do you fund that amount of money? And that's why I want to tell you why I'm particularly excited to talk to you about it tonight, and that is, because you all know that there's such a thing as momentum, it happens in all kinds of things, in projects and so forth, and it happens with respect to the development of phase two, and it's exciting because one of the things that, you know, when you, when you put a big project together, is getting the first big dollars for construction. And so let me tell you how that momentum is working and what's happening, and that is, about two months, two and a half months ago, we were in conversation with Congresswoman Bonamici, and the, the United States House was looking at earmarks for projects, something they haven't done for ten years, and so we had a lot of conversations with the Congresswoman, and, and one of the things we told her was, we needed her to put up the first dollars to move the project so that, you know, we could build on those dollars and get other people to jump in with more dollars, and, uh, they wanted to know how much, and that's, you know, never being the bashful sort, ten million dollars. She had a total of twenty million for the entire, her entire congressional district. And as a result of long conversations, work with ODOT, and work directly with the Congresswoman and her staff, she requested eight million dollars for this project, and then it went to the House Committee of which Peter DeFazio, you may know from the Eugene area, is the Chair of the Federal, of the Congressional Committee on Surface Transportation, and they put it into the bill in the House, and it passed the House. So that's, assuming that it gets the rest of the way through Congress, that's eight million dollars that can go towards the bypass for construction. Well, as a result of that, we talked further with Senators Wyden and Merkley, uh, they originally proposed five million, but then the rules of the Senate limited each to, or limited them to two million for a project, so they have proposed two million for the project, so there's ten million dollars. Well, what happened next? You may have read in the paper, but one of the things that Governor Brown had included in her budget for the legislature, to the legislature, was thirty-two million dollars. And where did that come from? That thirty-two million dollar number came from, from the point that to build the interchange at two nineteen, to connect phase one on across into phase two, realign the Wainouski, and some of the other things, uh, came from ODOT for a number of thirty-two million, and so after a great deal of work and effort, and our, with our people, the mayor, the lobbyists, many others, the legislature just recently, at the end of June, included thirty-two million dollars more for the bypass. So now you're at forty-two million for construction. One of the next things that happened then is that there's a group called the Midwalamet Area Committee, Commission on Transportation, and they met, and they made a recommendation to ODOT that, of the monies that ODOT has for projects, the ten million more ought to go for the bypass, so if you get that, and we're in the process of working on that, and you can thank people like uh, Representative Post, Representative Noble, Senators Thatcher, and Boquist for the momentum on the state for the thirty-two million, now we're looking at trying to get another ten million, which would be sixty-two million dollars. So, that would not only build the interchange, which is thirty, but leave another almost thirty million for the rest of the phase two, and would you say, well, how does that play out? When you look at big, big opportunities, which are now presenting themselves on the federal funding level, and one of the big ones that is up there is called the InfraGrants, and it could be a large, large grant, very competitive, but they look at a lot of factors. ODOT has made it really clear to us, and I think, and many others, that if we're going to move this project forward, we need to have additional local dollars in the mix to get that big grants, and to build that stage, and, and, you know, so I can tell you from the Parkway Committee side, we think it's a great investment to move forward with the project, to have additional local dollars. And if we can do that, we can go look and get the, the amount of money we need for the state and local match to apply for a, a very large grant, hopefully, if we got that, you could fund all of phase two, the rest of the construction. And so, that's why I say that it's about momentum, it's about excitement, but it takes all of us, just like it did on phase one with some local dollars, it's going to take some phase two dollars. Having said that, when you think about it, when you go to the local communities and you put money into the first phase, and then we go back and we say we need money for the second phase, well, then if we came back to you again and said, now we need money from Dayton to Dundee, I can tell you that a whole lot of us, including your mayor and the other mayors and myself, think that's politically just not, not doable. What, what we're proposing, from an overall strategy point, is that there would be one more local match from Newburgh, Dundee, McMinville, the county, hopefully from the Confederated Tribal Council, but that would do it, and would move the project to not only build phase two, but you some of the money that the locals would commit would be held aside and wouldn't be used until you get to phase three, because I think we all want that built. Clearly, you can understand why McMinville wants phase three built from Dayton to Dundee, and you can understand why the Tribal Council and the county would. Uh, but, you know, one of the things we did as a part of this project is everybody looked out for everybody else, and the Parkway Committee, and I can tell you, the mayors of McMinville and the Tribal Council all recognized that the logical next piece to build was phase two, and that's a huge benefit to Newburgh, more so than to, than to Dundee, and so it was because of that spirit of cooperation that we got where we were to move phase two forward, so, then the question comes up. All right, what do you, how, how do you go about raising more dollars from already financially constrained local governments to put in significant dollars? And if you were to say, Dave, how much? What do you, what do you think we need to put in? And I can tell you, uh, what ODOT thinks, but I'm not prepared to tell you how much it is, it's going to be a lot of money, but if I, you know, the first time you put a name, a number on the table, it kind of gets written in stone, and, and I think that the better strategy, and I've told this to ODOT, and we've talked about it with the mayors and others, is to say, what, what the locals are committed to is to helping to fund phase two and three. And we're not prepared to say how much that is yet, first of all, because we don't know within about a forty percent order of magnitude, what's the cost of phase two? And you certainly wouldn't want to say, we'll pick up a percentage of the cost of phase two, find out that phase two costs less money than you thought, and you'd pay for something that they didn't need. Well, the other one is, here's a strategy that I think could work in terms of funding, and this is just a talking point, but if you were to take ARPA dollars, American Rescue Plan dollars, from each of the cities, the county, and the tribe gets a bunch of them, and said, we'll put upfront some dollars out of that, and we'll use those dollars to go into the mix for the match for the construction of the two nineteen interchange, and for a part of, of our obligation on phase two, uh, that will do two things. Momentum, if it's anything, is everything, and that gets some dollars into the mix early on, uh, real dollars that could be used for phase two construction, and that's critical as a part of what I told you about, that list of people that are participating, you've got Bonamici, you've got the senators, you now have the Oregon Legislature, if we can get ODOT with the monies from MWAQ, and then some of these dollars, you can see that, that that's part of a funding strategy that's got momentum and can work. What it also does is, and it's critical to the next piece, and that is, how do you come up with a lot more dollars for a long-range funding strategy for phases two and three? Back when we built phase one, the way we raised the money was that uh, as a part of the money that came, that hundred and ninety-two million from the legislature, there was a big gas tax increase. In fact, in twenty twenty-two, there will be an additional gas tax increase, I believe, two cents a gallon, and again in twenty twenty-four, part of those dollars will also flow through to the local jurisdictions, but as a part of that funding strategy back in that era, the local jurisdictions came up with a strategy based upon population of how much each jurisdiction ought to put into the project, so when I listed that, of how much the different ones put in, it was based upon a rational formula of population and percentage of our share of that twenty million, or actually, the, our locals put in sixteen million dollars. So that was funded by a loan from the Oregon Infrastructure Bank. We literally went out, and the three cities in the county borrowed sixteen million dollars, and that is being paid for every year out of gas tax revenues that flowed out of that bill that put up the money to build phase one. So, when you look at your budget, and you say, we're paying that debt, it's so much every year. And so I suggested, well, rather than trying to get local jurisdictions to come up with more money out of it right now, what would happen if the four jurisdictions, the three cities and the counties said, look, when you're ready to go to construction, and we need to put up money, let's restructure our debt that we owe at that time, and let's pick a year, twenty twenty-four, let's restructure that debt, and we'll, we won't raise the amount of money paid mon, annually, they, the payments would stay the same, but what would happen is, is that you would extend the term of the debt. And if you were to say that, so we've been working with ODOT and their infrastructure people, if in twenty twenty-four you were to restructure that debt, you could raise, depending on the term, but it could be sixteen million plus dollars from the local jurisdictions that could be used as a part of this package to fund our share of phases two and three, and it wouldn't include, or increase your debt service, so that to me is politically a great deal more palatable than coming back and saying, oh, we just now raised your debt service, uh, another a hundred and two hundred thousand a year, or whatever it is, which are dollars you desperately need for your ongoing maintenance of your streets. So, the, the, the goal was to leave that debt service the same. Now, one of the advantages of using, using ARPA funds dollars first, another advantage is we can put money into the project now, and we don't have to guess how much we're going to ultimately put in, because you will restructure your debt and put in money when they're ready to go to construction. You will have a very much more refined number of what do we really, would we really put in as a participating share? And we all think, from a local standpoint, that is somewhat less than this dollars that ODOT has put into the project. So, you restructure in twenty twenty-four, hopefully, the, that debt, and get phase two built, and then we move on to phase three. Phase three is probably the easiest one to construct in terms of, of not nearly as many large bridges or infrastructure. ODOT has hired a company called, uh, Parametrics, it's a design engineering firm to do so designed on that phase three from Dayton to Dundee to say, what kinds of things could we do if we really wanted to try and save money, build the, the highway from those two points, and have some intelligent design engineering concepts done, and that's going on now, one of them is an example, is at Dundee, now, excuse me, at, at the Dayton End, as originally designed, there was a huge interchange that was like sixty million dollars. And the Parkway Committee and suggested, we've had conversations with ODOT, I would tell you that there's a very high probability that that's going to be about an eighteen million dollar roundabout, and it wouldn't be that much, but you have to go across the railroad tracks, and there's a bunch more construction on ninety-nine, but it would be dramatically less expensive, so we're thinking, uh, that, they've given us some clearly numbers on construction costs, there again, with a forty percent contingency. Well, who knows what that's going to be then, but if in twenty twenty-eight or twenty-nine or thirty, you were ready to build that one, and you'd raise the rest of the money, you'd have a much more refined idea of what's the cost of phase three, and at that point, you'd, once, once again, you would restructure your debt obligation from this current debt, and you'd redo it again, and you'd extend that term some additional years, but you do it with the concept that it's still the same debt service level. And so, uh, you know, it's like having the advantage of paying off a, a state or a city bond for transportation. It, it's a lot easier when that matures, if you can put in a new bond and just continue the same payments. Uh, it certainly has worked in McMinville and other cities, so, so that's the concept, there's, there's another important concept that, that we all think is important, we're only going to put in dollars one more time, but it's important to know that those dollars will go to both projects, so that that somebody doesn't come back later and say, well, golly, you put in a bunch of money and all got spent on phase two, maybe you need to put in something more on phase three, so, that's an overall construct of what we think makes sense, and then you would have a have the ability to refine what we really think we ought to be paying as you go along with each phase, but it brings a much higher probability, we think, in terms of phasing, of, of completing all three phases, so having said that, let me just tell you where I am with the, with the county commissioners, and it'll give you a perspective on where you might want to go in your conversation. But after we had this conversation with the commissioners last week, Commissioner Sterrett, Chair Sterrett said, so what's next? And I said, well, I told her about our, the meetings that I'm going to be having, and she said, well, would you come back and report to us? And I said, well, clearly we would, if, we're not asking anybody for a commitment tonight. All we want to do is inform the bodies so that they can say, understand what we are doing, and then we'd come, put together a conversation of the, hopefully all five bodies, of, does everybody agree that first, this is a concept that makes sense, and that it would be, uh, and if it does, and if all the entities say, go, go, put together a, a, a plan based on this concept, and bring it back to us, so that we can look at it in terms of, of real dollars, and, and what would it get us? And how would that work? That's what we would do. None of you would be in any position at this point to even begin to say, uh, you know, I'd like the program, or I'd vote for it, other than to say, what, what we would want, what you would ask us to do is go back and say, get all the groups together, and I'm, I would suggest that it be the mayors and the managers of the five different entities, and/or in the case of some of commissioners, and we would put together with that group a structured arrangement that says, here's what it looks like, and here's what, here's what it would raise, and bring it back so that you could then have an informed conversation on, uh, what kind of commitments it would take, so. Uh, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I'm sure this is, this is a boatload to put on you, I can tell you, the first time on the face phase, we didn't have this opportunity nearly as much, because we were pretty much told how much we were going to raise, and it all got, kind of like a bombshell. I didn't like it, a number of people didn't like it, and so, uh, we really want to have a more informed conversation where you have time to think about it, to ask questions, and where all of your, where the mayors and the managers can have an opportunity for input, and begin a, a conversation that would lead to something that, that you would find palatable for the City of Newburgh, and hopefully that it would work, uh, with the same kind of a formula that we had with all of our partners, which has gotten us where we are, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm delighted to answer questions.
Alrighty, well, thank you, um, there you all go, uh, questions, anyone? Raise your hand, and I will recognize you. All right, Dave, while they are thinking about it, I must say, I drove on the bypass yesterday and thought about you the whole time, my friend, so there you are. Um, you know, I have a question, what, when do you, what do you, Dave, what are you thinking timewi, uh, timeline-wise for this, for the next session, for the next thing between mayors and the, and the city managers, what, what time are you thinking, or when might we need the local map?
Well, I think you're all being called on, and, and I understand how how many different choices you're going to have, for example, with the ARPA dollars, American Rescue Plan. You know, the county told us when we had that meeting, that, that they are going to get twenty-one million dollars, and they've got about a hundred million dollars worth of requests, so, a lot of difficult decisions, so you're going to have to make some complicated, difficult decisions, just as Congresswoman Bonamici did, of where and what are your highest priorities, and where do you put those dollars? And how much, and then we need to get all the other entities to all concur of, of what's enough, you know, how much is it based upon some kind of a ratio, so that we're all in at the same level, and so, I would hope that we would be able to begin to have those meetings shortly after I meet with the the, the City of McMinville on the tenth of, of this month, and begin to talk about it and read the, real detail with your financial people to look at what, what that might look like, Mr. Mayor. So I'm hoping we would be back to this council, uh, it could be later in the, in Au, in August versus September, but I know you're all under a lot of pressure, there's a lot of money there to, lots of demands, and people are beginning to say, where do you want to spend it? I just would wanted to have you have a, an opportunity to know that it could be a significant factor in your long-term debt with respect to the bypass, and to put a placeholder so that that, that this becomes a part of the conversation.
Thanks so much. All right, any other questions for Dave? All right. Well, seeing, uh, Mr. Hogberg cannot thank you enough, Dave, uh, for all that you've done. And I think, I really think we really appreciate this heads up, particularly with, uh, as you said, the ARPA money, the idea of potentially refinancing, et cetera. So the timing is great and, uh, thank you. Denise?
I don't have a question, but I do have to admit I was one of the non-believers. I wasn't as steadfast as you, but I, now I'm a believer. If you're there, I'm a believer. So thank you for all your hard work.
So let me say, Mr. Mayor, you've got a couple of councilors that may not have had a chance to, to hear all this. I can tell you, if they want to call me, I'd be happy to give them a briefing and, uh, would do that if, just whatever they might ask. And one thing I just should, I can't go by without at least closing with, you know, every year and including this one, the city of Newburgh and all the other participants have put up lobbying dollars to go raise money for this bypass. And how much I appreciate it. But when you think about it, this year, the past year ending June thirty, the total lobbying budget since we're so busy on the state and federal level was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can tell you who puts it up if you want. Forty or fifty of it's local, is private dollars. But for a hundred and fifty thousand, that was absolutely critically spent. And we raised forty-two million dollars potentially out of that, at least thirty-two million is guaranteed and hopefully the ten million from Congress. It would not have happened without that hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment. So just so when people say, well, why do you spend those money on lobbying and so forth? That those dollars were incredibly well spent.
That's good return, right? That's a good return on investment. Many thanks to Michelle Shiger and company for that. So that's, uh, that's awesome. All right. Anything else for, uh, Dave? All right. Mr. Hogberg, we will see you again soon. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening. Stay cool.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Onto item five B on our
No, I'm leaving.
Council rules discussion. So I think, uh, James and I are going to lead it off. And I think, uh, Elise says, is, uh, part of the discussion for requesting this. So James, you want to lead off or would you like me to?
Sure. If I, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind me providing just a, a, a brief kickoff and a little bit of background. As, um, as shared, we thought that, uh, this portion of the work session would be a good time to, uh, for council to have a discussion regarding council rules. Uh, just so that we're all on the same page, uh, section eleven of the, uh, Newburgh City Charter tasked the council with adopting council rules. The council rules, uh, that the city has in place, the original version of those rules were adopted in twenty fourteen. Uh, or excuse me, twenty, yes, twenty eleven, actually. Twenty eleven is when they were first adopted. And they've been amended a few times since then, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and, uh, recently in, in twenty nineteen. There was a pretty robust, um, set of meetings conducted by a rule subcommittee. Um, uh, I had the, the opportunity to take a look at the, the minutes from the fifteen or so meetings, give or take, that, that, that rules subcommittee, uh, conducted. And in that, they did make some substantial revisions to the rules. Um, so although Newburgh's rules, um, seem to have originated from some form of the model rules produced by the League of Oregon Cities. They, they have had a number of updates, uh, to, to fit the city as they should. And, and I do think that I would share with the council, I do think it is a healthy exercise to revisit the, the council rules periodically. So, you know, the, seeing that they've already been amended in fourteen, fifteen and nineteen, um, is, is not a, a surprise or problematic. I think that it's good to, to revisit and have, um, conversations to discuss them and make sure that they're, they're fitting, um, with the council, uh, the council's goals and efforts. Um, I think that, you know, what I'd hope to, 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 to achieve in this conversation is, is, um, some guidance on how council wants to proceed. If there's changes that you'd like to see with the rules, some, some input on that. But even if it's, um, more direction on, uh, or, or assistance with, um, uh, kind of training or opportunities to, to review the rules as they are in place so that the entire council has a working kind of knowledge familiarity with the rules. I think that that's, um, that's an excellent use of time. Uh, the, the kind of message that a lot of, a lot of city attorneys will, will, will share is that, that it's ideal for the rules to be a, a tool and not a weapon to be used, um, consistently, followed consistently so that they are the tool to help the council navigate the difficult conversations that you'll inevitably have, um, make the difficult decisions that you'll inevitably have to make. Um, it's supposed to be a tool to, 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 to help this body, um, navigate those in the way that works best for the city. Um, when they're, when they don't quite fit or when they're used sporadically, that's when they can become or be interpreted as a weapon, which, which we want to avoid. So I'm in favor of having kind of a streamlined set of rules, something that isn't excessive, you know, too long, quite frankly, so that it's easier to, to, um, to track and, and follow. And of course, if, uh, there's anything I can do in the area of training or, or revisions and whatnot to help the council as you look to make your rules fit, um, your work, I'm happy to do so.
Awesome. Thank you, James. Uh, the other thing I'll just mention is that, uh, the timely, this, the timeliness of this, it might be timely, I'll put it that way. Um, I've been to recently two different public meetings in Newburgh or on calls, two different public meetings where the actual rules and the procedure were being called into question. Um, and it was mentioned twice. So I think we need to be as close to the rules as we can in terms of how we interact, et cetera. Um, you know, we don't want to be accused of, of that same sort of thing. So, uh, there you are. All right. Um, and, and I'll, I'll come back on a couple of those things once we get further into the discussion. So, um, thoughts about James's comments regarding streamlining the rules potentially? And if there's areas of focus that we'd really like to bore down on. So any thoughts, folks? Elise?
Well, I feel like we're going to get a call from Patrick Johnson really upset about, um, working through the rules. But I know there was a lot of work put into this, so I don't want to minimize that effort at all. Um, but I would love, um, and I would be happy to be in a subgroup or however we want to go through this of, um, really condensing the council rules. I think it would be great if we could almost have them memorized like that, that sort of short. Um, and that all of the, all of our committee met, or all of our council members and city staff feel comfortable with them. Um, I think it's important that, you know, we all have specific things that are important to us. But I do really hope that the council rules could be agreed to by everyone. And then obviously I would love if there could be specific language, um, interw, um, intertwined around equity and inclusive language um, in our conversations. That would be awesome.
All right. Very good. Well stated, Elise. Thank you. Um, anybody else? How do you feel? Stephanie?
This is kind of an aside, but, um, and I should know this. Um, but the League of Oregon Cities puts on, um, trainings. And I think, um, those are really great trainings because they help give a bigger context to the rules that we have on our council and why they're there and how they work in the context larger than just our council. And I don't know if they're looking to start doing those again anytime soon. I know I've gone through those a couple of times. Um, but certainly if you haven't done that, or even if you have, it's good to update, um, with the League of Oregon City. Cause I think that's been really helpful for me to think about them in more of a global context and not just on the micro level. But why we do the things we do and why those rules are important. So, um, I should have asked this question before and maybe Sue or Dan knows that the League of Oregon Cities will be doing some of those soon, I guess, maybe on hold again with the newest numbers. But, um, that's something that I would really encourage and I'm ready for an update from League of Oregon Cities. And if they can't do it, I certainly wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to kind of do something for ourselves around those, the rules and why they are.
Very good.
I know they were doing online ones because I went over the early spring. There was some over early spring, I want to say.
There are online, uh, trainings that have continued, but I believe today or tomorrow, there is a League of Oregon Cities conference registration. Uh, and I believe they do trainings at the conference as well. And I believe could be convinced to come, provide some of that training, although I'm not sure they do that anymore. But I know that the materials online are robust and, uh, they're, they'll take a little bit of time to go through, but they're worthwhile.
And that's time for a good plug for the LOC conference, which is coming up in the not too distant future. So, Sue?
Um, so what Stephanie is thinking of is elected essentials. And they offer it every other year. So they offer it during election years in the fall. Um, Patty Multhill, who's the, the main legal counsel for League of Oregon Cities. They have offered one-on-one, meaning one, not one person at a time, sorry. It's one city at a time trainings. And as Dan said, they do have recorded videos online. And I use those sometimes to refer new staff to, especially if we get staff who had, do not have previous government experience or come from another state, uh, which may vary. So they are available. Um, and yes, I believe they will be offering them next year because twenty twenty-two will be our next election year. So the conference schedule kind of depends upon what the flavor of the year is. Um, I think the last time they had a lot of homelessness webinars. So they don't always offer the basics, um, every year at conference. So if you wish to register for the conference, please let me know and myself or Sarah will get you signed up.
All right. Um, other comments, folks? All right. Well, we have the suggestion of a subcommittee to try to streamline so that they can all be memorized, maybe to the tune of a song or ditty, that we can all remember the council rules. So do we have other volunteers who would like to participate in this if you think it's a good idea? I, I will, I, I don't know if I can venture to say this, but I would guess it's not going to be fifteen meetings. I'm just saying. So will that entice anyone else, please?
I'll do it if it's not fifteen meetings.
Okay.
For sure.
It's three meetings or less.
You got it. I'm in.
Okay, there it is. It's promised as three or less. Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it too.
Okay, there's Jules, Denise, Elise, I guess, right? The three of you?
All right.
Yay. Good deal. Thank you, guys. All right. Awesome. Does that sound like a good next step? Any other questions? Anything, James?
What's our timeline to come back to you?
Uh, timeline, huh? Um, I don't know. A couple of months, maybe? Is that, is that good?
So just a reminder on your energy levels, because I do like to watch the volunteers' energy levels. You have another subcommittee that's wrapping up the committee on committee system review. And then you have quarterly budget meetings starting. And so, um, to actually appoint people, we would need to bring it back and do it during business session. So maybe we can look at calendars and sometime after the quarterly budget meetings, because you're going to be on a a tight timeline for talking about the ARP money is my understanding. Okay, just reminding you, you've got a lot going on. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. So let's get back, maybe we might have to extend the deadline a little bit for you all and maybe end of the year or something. But anyway, let's get back, um, but we'll come back on the official duty of getting you all appointed to a subcommittee, uh, hopefully at our next meeting. All right. Any, James?
I, I would also add that at least in the, in the fifteen or so meetings that were conducted by the last subcommittee, a, a large part of that exercise was looking at the LOC's model rules compared against Newburgh's rules. LOC's model rules, I think, um, were dated twenty seventeen. I think that's the last time they updated them was twenty seventeen. It may be worth checking to see when or if another update is coming. I suspect that at least there will be some questions arising from the legislation passed in, uh, in June related to remote testimony and remote access to meetings. Um, and so there may be some other areas where LOC is on the cusp and has, has some updates and it would be great to, um, borrow from that R and D, for the subcommittee to borrow from that R and D.
Awesome. Sounds great. Okay. Um, anything else on rules? All right. I just got a couple, a couple of reminders. Uh, first off, um, we, we had a couple of executive sessions last week. Um, and I want to make sure everybody's getting notice of those. So if you have not, if you can give alternate contact information to Sue, whether that's, uh, you know, a home email, uh, whatever it might be, so that we make sure everybody gets that information. I would hate it if somehow you, you missed out on, uh, a meeting. Wouldn't want to do that. So, um, the other thing, the only other thing that I have for rules that I might try to, and again, this is by having witnessed a couple of meetings, is to, uh, is to ask for recognition from the chair, um, once we go in, just to try to keep a little bit of order, namely if we get more public comment. And the other thing is that if you do have a question, ask a question, then let's ask for a follow-up if it pertains to the answer given. So we can give other people the chance to, to all get their questions answered. So if that's, if that's okay, just a brief reminder. So. All right. Anything else on rules, folks? All right. How's about the, uh, how's about the city managers report, Dan? Could we ask you to do that before the business session?
Sure. I think I can probably keep it to less than fifteen minutes. Um, just a, a few items. Uh, one, that, uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, cooling centers about a month ago. And just want to remind, uh, folks that we had another, um, blip, I suppose, a couple of days of, of heat. And so we did, uh, reissue, uh, information about cooling centers. And I just want to appreciate the, the staff that helped with that again. And, uh, I'm, I've not heard yet how many folks took us up on that. I'm not sure we had anywhere near the hundred and fifteen degree heat that we had before. But, uh, certainly I think we were expecting triple digits and, um, you know, uh, timing wise, it was a little bit easier to handle in the, it was a work day, not a weekend. Um, but I know the library was available as a location as well as some others in, in Newburgh. And we continue to coordinate, uh, regionally, uh, thanks to Hawaii Harkema. Um, related to that, uh, OSHA did issue, uh, their heat rules. Uh, I think we had talked about that as well last month and it came, uh, right afterwards. And so we've, uh, shared that training out. Uh, there's some online through our NeoGov system. There's some training that staff can take and, um, we're using that system, I think, to great effect, actually, in the sense that it tracks on your, your personnel record, right, that you've taken the required and assigned training. And, uh, as formal as that may sound, at least it gives us a, a sense of who's done what's required of them and who needs follow-up. But, uh, some good videos and some good awareness, uh, as required by the state. But just also, you know, good information for us, uh, for especially those who are working out in the heat, uh, during the day. Also talked, uh, we'll talk a little bit later about urban renewables. So I won't belabor that. I had, had, uh, some, some of my time spent on that last week. Um, also just working on, uh, survey information for waste management as follow-up to that, uh, meeting that they came and, and talked about rates and those kinds of things. So we're trying to get the details of that to be able to, to get that survey up and running and post that information. So some back and forth there. Uh, have not forgotten it. Um, working on scheduling the, uh, ARPA conversations, uh, sort of timely. I think we've got a lot of things on this agenda that relate to our economy and to, um, economic development. Uh, obviously the sort of one-time, uh, COVID recovery funds are, uh, you know, an opportunity, if nothing else, for, uh, real investment in the community and, and for hopefully really stimulating that recovery. Uh, we're planning on a couple of sessions, I think, with the Budget Committee, uh, looking at late, uh, August, so late this month to try to put those together. Probably the first one being, here's the funds and all the limitations, if there are, there are some, but there are not extensive limitations on them. But, um, just what the limitations are, what the sources of funding are, what we have, what might be good criteria to consider when we're talking about allocations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So trying to framework, uh, what that might look like in one meeting and then, uh, talk about how that, uh, those funds could be allocated in such that we could give some staff direction to, um, stand up some programs hopefully, or at least start to, to get that out and, and moving. Um, mindful of the fact that we also have not received the funding yet, although I think we're very close to receiving the money. Um, so wanting to get that, that moving. And at best I can tell, uh, maybe not that surprising is that we're nowhere, uh, different than any other jurisdiction in the sense that uh, everybody's sort of, what do we do with ARPA? And so I think it'll require, uh, a conversation that we'll obviously have in the Budget Committee. But, uh, you know, a conversation about what makes sense for Newburgh and that's what other communities are doing. They're all thinking about how to And that's what other communities are doing. They're all thinking about how to give us money. No, just kidding. They're thinking about how to uh, fund for their own priorities and and having that flexible conversation. So uh, I think we're taking the same approach as others. Uh, and it is taking time. I've not heard anybody who's got, you know, the this sort of magic formula for how to handle ARPA. Um, and I have had a conversation with the Chair Hogberg about the bypass that he obviously shared before and and it was super helpful. I I don't have a number either. But that certainly that that seems like a worthy uh, project to put in the mix. And certainly, you know, we're talking about the potential of some relatively big dollars there, but um, you know, I like the idea, if nothing else. Um, this week, we're in the process of interviewing strategic planning consultants, uh, trying to to finalize that process. And I know um, as part of the Budget Committee conversation was this idea of talking about political and or um, bigger uh, policy decisions. Um, trying to to get those policy decisions ironed out in, say, a strategic plan and uh, really, uh, I think staff is very much looking forward to that. I I personally looking forward to it, I guess, but also I I've heard, you know, in the conversations with department heads, that certainty of where we're going and and how to allocate uh, resources and time and uh, and money resources uh, will be welcome. So I'm hopeful, maybe by the end of the week, we'll have a better sense as to where we're going to go with that. Um, and and be able to select a a firm or be closer. Um, lastly, uh, well, two things, actually. One, uh, before I get into face coverings, uh, the uh, return to live council, uh, to in person, I should say, council, since this is live. Um, in person council, we talked about uh, date in September to possibly target and, you know, based on what I'm about to say about face coverings and and Delta. I'm not sure that that makes a whole lot of sense, but I will say that we are looking at technology issues in the Council Chamber slash PSP, the Public Safety Building Training Room, to determine how to do uh, the video uh, and and also how to do hybrid, which I'm thinking is going to be either a requirement or certainly a better practice for us, given people's potential limitations around COVID. So we're looking at the technology issues right now, trying to iron those out. We're trying to plan, in essence, for when we would be able to get back in in the same room. Um, likely assume that we'll need us, even though there are not the physical distancing requirements per se, that we'll still maybe want to have uh, some of the plastic screening or those kinds of things. So we'll we'll look into what makes sense and and certainly, of course, we're monitoring uh, COVID and and what the guidance and requirements are by the state and feds and all of all the good folks out there who are watching that. Uh, last item is COVID. And, you know, we are, as of today, unfortunately, back to face coverings being required in our city facilities. Um, there's been some email questions about that. That was my decision. Um, and made, I think with the information available, uh, both from recommendations from Oregon Health Authority, from CDC, that there are clearly uh, cases coming, breakthrough cases of those who are vaccinated, but also there are cases, uh, as they they're talking about right now, that uh, COVID is really uh, an affliction of those who are unvaccinated. Uh, and really, it's quite serious and and it's really, it's it's honestly, a little bit scary in the sense of of how pervasive it's becoming among the unvaccinated. But regardless, the mask requirement does a few things for us. One uh, follows the guidance of folks who are much more attuned to health than I am in that sense, like who are knowledgeable about uh, public health um, and and track it as their business, but also, um, you know, mask requirements, avoid a requirement of employees to be vaccinated or a requirement of proof of uh, your vaccination status. Uh, things that other jurisdictions, I've seen many cities and some and state governments are starting to require, private businesses starting to require uh, folks to be vaccinated. Um, wanting to not do that if I can, um, also wanting to make sure that we meet our legal obligation, which is to provide a safe workplace for our staff, uh, and a safe uh, environment for the public to consumer services, thinking about the library or other other things of that nature. Um, and obviously, there are some, you know, and I have a child under 12, so I, you know, I there are folks out there who are uh, perfectly healthy and yet unable to to have a vaccination uh, as of right now. And there are certainly many who are immunocompromised and and have other issues where they cannot receive a vaccination. So we're trying to be mindful of the entire community when we, uh, and all of our visitors, when we uh, put a face covering requirement back in in place. Um, and frankly, the bottom line of all of this is continuity of operations such that we can continue to provide the service uh, that folks expect of us. And um, you know, if we were to lose even um, you know, a small percentage of our our staff, I think it could be uh, really devastating. And certainly, we've seen throughout COVID, and it's been all, it's been a while, that there are these sort of um, moments when when the infection rate is very high uh, in certain areas. And so we're trying to avoid all of those things. Um, and still provide the highest level of service we can. And and that means that we're providing alternative service. We're we're having um, time when people can, you know, call in, use uh, remote service, whether it's online or calling us or um, you know, even do it, we can do these types of uh, video call uh, service opportunities for appointments. And frankly, uh, curbside i- is always an option as well. Uh, such that an appointment might be outside. So we're trying to be as as uh, respectful of folks who do not want to wear a face covering. We're not requiring that you come into our building to get service, but we're also, you know, when you do uh, respectfully asking that folks wear a face covering. So that's, that is that, and that is the city manager's report and and uh, you know, appreciate uh, the opportunity to talk about the face coverings.
Thank you, Dan. Um, any questions, folks? Comments? Uh, go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, I think you were gonna come back to uh, urban renewal fund stuff.
Well, we've got that later on the agenda. I don't want to steal the thunder.
Okay.
Later discussions. And I'm happy to talk offline if that's uh, an easier thing as well for some of that, but we'll have plenty of urban rule tonight.
Great, great. And then the other question, uh, at the risk of being like that counselor, um, in terms of returning, you know, back to in person, I don't know if this is James or Dan or what have you, but um, legally, do we have to return to in person? Um, if not, I wonder if there it'd be worth having a co- having a conversation about potentially like having this be a more regular way of meeting. And others would be like, absolutely not. What is okay? But it might at least be worth having a conversation.
I think bottom line, we are looking at hybrid, if nothing else, and that could mean, in my view of it, and I'm not the legal expert, but so I'll I'll shut up shortly about that. But really, it's about providing uh, an ability to participate for in the entire community. And so I would assume that that could also work for counselors. But um, yeah, I think the challenges of uh, of the technology are a little bit we're exploring them. How's that? We're working those out.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, I think I think that the the practical components have historically ruled the day as far as meeting, meeting in person versus meeting remotely. I do know that, you know, there's statutory language that allows for participation even from members of the of the governing body to participate in the meeting remotely. Um, but the the boundaries of that have not been pushed quite the way that they are going to be uh, looking forward. Um, but there's been some, this is some of what I referred to about the legislation in June about the ability to have remote participation. Some of that's with, you know, respect to testimony by members of the public, but there's also some language that allows for some broader remote contributions by by, you know, even members of the governing body. So there's some possibility there, but again, the practical components are are a major driver.
All right, thank you.
That makes sense. And I'm all for practical. Oh, sorry, Rick. I think my side's delayed.
No worries. Um, all right, any other, any other comments, folks? All right, um, let's see. The other thing is back to the notion of the of the cooling shelters. I did see Howie Harkema today, and I'll see him Thursday for a um, uh, mayor's call on homelessness. So he is, they are looking for a sort of a more permanent cooling station than than what we currently have. So if anybody has any suggestions, I'll bring it out to the Ministerial Association, see what they have, you know, as we did have Zion at one point, which was, which is awesome. So anyway, so if anybody has any ideas, please let me know. Uh, Stephanie?
This is not an idea. It's an added problem. Um, but that reminded me, the um, shelter in Newburgh is having a hard time getting enough volunteers to be able to be open every night. Um, so like, I know tonight they're not going to be open because they couldn't um, fill the shifts. So if you are someone that you know um, is ready and willing to do just a like a four hour shift at the shelter, um, it's in a, it's in a house now. Um, they've got a great program going on, but um, they definitely need volunteers to be able to be open every day. So um, if you have questions, you could ask Elise, you could ask me, um, or just get in touch with the shelter.
Uh, Dan, do you think that's something we could push out on the city and the city's communication channels?
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of overall uh, volunteer opportunities, I've seen uh, that be really effective um, in communities. And maybe that's a good approach. I I'm not sure when it comes to, you know, specific programs, I if that would be, you know, that's appropriate if it's if it's just one, but I would say, yeah, if there are citywide opportunities, I think that we're, as you point out eloquently, we are a community of volunteers. So why shouldn't we let them know where to go?
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, uh, I wonder if this is something that we might be able to address in the upcoming quarterly budget meeting? Because we we definitely are community volunteers, and I feel like if this is something that that we collectively value as a city, we could or should really consider putting funds behind it. Um, so that it isn't predicated on volunteers um, only would be my thought suggestion.
All right, yep, good point. All right. Um, anything else, folks? Any other comments at the moment? All right, let's go, oh, go ahead, Elise.
I was just going to mention that Sunday, we do have another volunteer open house. So if people are, that would be a good time to come check it out. And um, Kara's done a really great job. We do have a one, we have one employee right now, so that's awesome, but um, the rest are all volunteers and it's really fallen on a couple of people to rally. And especially during COVID, you know, that's the other part piece of this is that because I'm involved, we're super strict on exposure criteria. So uh, you know, gotta be masked and um, follow CDC guidelines, uh, guidelines on exposures for volunteers and getting tested and staying away. And we really need to prevent an outbreak. We did have an outbreak early in COVID and you gotta really prevent that in this high risk setting, so.
All right, any other comments, folks, here for the end of the work session? All right, seeing none, why don't we come back and reconvene in five minutes, which puts us at 7:08. And sorry for anybody who was waiting for the business session. We'll be there at 7:08. Thank you. All right, with that, I will call to order the City Council Business Session for August 2nd, 2021. Uh, my apologies for us being a li- a little bit late. Our work session ran long, so anyone listening in at home, so our our apologies. Um, let's go on to the roll call, please, Sue.
Um, Counselor McBride is absent this evening as he is on vacation. Counselor Cofield?
Here.
Counselor Yurinell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Finley?
Here.
All right, thank you very much. The pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Um, we had the city managers' report earlier during the work session, and there will be a uh, a written version of that on the website for anyone who might have missed it. Um, next, let's move on to item five, uh, 5B, actually. This is the public comments section. Um, I understand you, we do have comments from Mr. Robert Suppy, but I understand, Sue, that he would not be attending this part of the meeting.
He would not be attending this part of the meeting. So I promoted Mark Greier, who was the only individual who signed up, so.
Okay, great. Uh, just a comment regarding uh, Robert Suppy's letter that to the council, you all have seen it. It was included in the packet. Um, for those who are listening at home, uh, Mr. Suppy is asking about our July 19, 2021 resolution to purchase land um, from West Rock for the additional water treatment plant. Um, he's asking about why that was charged to uh, rates rather than to SDCs. Um, and the explanation was given that there was not money at the time in the SDC rate. Um, you know, I, for myself, I would like, I would like to hear more on that. I know we have an SDC discussion tonight. Uh, but I would like to know uh, why this money wasn't, or this project wasn't included. So, and thank you, Mr. Suppy, for those comments. All right, and then uh, now, um, Mr. Greer, good evening. Hello, Mr. Greer, can you hear us? Have you? I see that you've been promoted.
He may just need to unmute himself.
There we go.
Okay.
Uh, am I audible now?
You are, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, first off, thanks for giving me time to speak tonight. Um, I'm a longtime resident of Newburgh. We've lived in town here since 1978. I currently reside at 317 Air Parkway over by the airport. And for some time, I've been a little concerned with the large number of seemingly derelict vehicles parked on public streets, not just cars with flat tires and expired tags, but construction trailers, vacation trailers, boats on trailers, at all. Uh, they just seem to keep accumulating. Nobody does anything about it. And I'm a little concerned because more than a nuisance, these things are, I feel a traffic hazard. They impede the smooth flow of traffic. They inhibit access to neighborhoods by emergency vehicles. And it's almost like Russian roulette, trying to enter a road like second or third street when the cars are parked literally up to the corner and you can't see incoming traffic. So I wondered if this was legal. And I wrote a email to the city of Newburgh. Oh, probably around the 10th of June this year, I got a reply from a Sergeant Brian Hagan of the Newburgh PD. He filled me in on all the particulars. And so nobody's, to, at least not to my surprise, these long term, long term parking of personal property on the city streets are not legal, but in fact, they are illegal. To wit, cars parked in excess of 72 hours on the street are in violation of Oregon Revised Statute 819.100. Violation subject fine. Trailers and boats at all parked more than 48 hours on the street are in violation of Newburgh Municipal Code 15.410020. So that's it, Mayor, chapter and verse. So now I kind of wonder why this doesn't seem to be enforced in Newburgh. So I asked the uh, the police officer, what do I do to report a violation? He says, you have to make an report. You don't call the uh, you don't call 911, you call the non-emergency number, tell them where the vehicle is, give a description of it, and it'll be handed off to the um, graveyard shift, seven to 10 days, they'll do something about it. So I did that. I picked a old beater van here on the end of Second Street where I live. It's been there for four years, hasn't moved. And uh, I said, well, okay, maybe something will finally get done. So I made a report. I waited a week, nothing. Went two weeks, nothing. Three weeks, nothing. Four weeks, finally, on the 15th of July, just about 30 days after I made a call, a cop called me at eight o'clock in the evening and said, oh, by the way, where's that van? So I told him. Nothing happened. Van's still there, no rectangular orange, move it or lose a tag. Hasn't been moved, nothing. I went by the next day and somebody had rolled it forward one car length. So in the space of, oh, four years, that derelict vehicle has moved about 10 feet. Now, that really doesn't seem to me to be very good uh, statute enforcement in the city of Newburgh. And I'd certainly appreciate it if that could be addressed and at least looked at. Now, but frankly, maybe a lot of people in town don't really know that this is illegal. In the letter that he gave me, he gave me a link to a newburgoregon.gov police webpage that's titled Parking Legally, Newburgh and Dundee. Most people probably even probably don't even know they're violating the law. Print that document out and put that in everybody's utility bill that you mail out every month. And they'll know that it's illegal and they're not going to do it. That might be a good place for the city to start. But of course, then you're going to have to follow it up with some sort of enforcement. Now, I, that just gives you something to think about and a place to start. And I'd certainly appreciate it if this got a little bit of attention. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, Mr. Greer, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Greer, thank you. Thank you very much for your for your comments um and for your suggestions. So so thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, have a have a good evening.
You too.
All right, thank you. All right, um, let's move on then, folks, to the consent calendar. Everybody who's who's listening, just just so you know, generally with public comments, particularly of this right, we do not, we do not generally comment back regarding public comment, but we will take it under advisement. I know uh, the city manager, I'm sure, was taking notes about uh Mr. Greer's comments and and others. So uh, just so you know that uh, we're not trying to be rude, it's just the the policies that we work with here. So thank you. All right, next, uh, the consent calendar, folks. If we have a motion, that would be good.
Mayor, move that we adopt uh the consent calendar.
Yeah.
Second.
And Stephanie with the second, Bryce with a motion, Stephanie with the second. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that's unanimous, Sue. All right, just uh for for those who who might be listening in at home, um, we what we just passed was um adjustments to the um financial assistance for people's municipal services bill. So what that is, is there are ways to have some credit to your municipal services bill. Um, so please, if you are interested in that, if you feel that you are in need, please let us know. There's a process to do so. Or if you are active duty military, uh, we also have a fund for that. So all of you out there, please, please consider that. All right, next, let's move on to the public hearings. This is public hearing ordinance twenty twenty one, twenty eight eighty five, and I believe our community development director Doug Rux will be chairing or will be leading us in this one.
Sue, can we promote Elaine up, please? And there she is. And then the next request is the PowerPoint, please. All right. Thank you, Mayor, Councilors. Uh, so Doug Rux, Community Development Director, uh, began by entering the entire staff report, the exhibits and attachments into the record. So this evening, uh, we're holding a public hearing on the proposed Newburg Urban Renewal Plan. And as the title indicates, it's an ordinance making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the Newburger Renewal Plan and directing the notice of approval be published. So this evening, Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting LLC and I will be giving you a presentation. This is going to be a little bit longer PowerPoint presentation than what we normally give. So we're going to kind of queue it up. We're going to go through some urban renewal one oh one, go through different projects and the different steps that we went through. I think it's important, uh, just a refresher for the council. I know you've seen a number of seen this information a number of times, but for those who are watching, it's also very important uh to get an understanding. So next slide, Sue. So the role of the city council this evening. Bullet number one, review the proposed urban renewal plan and take public testimony. The second part of this is to consider the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners Order Resolution um from last Thursday. Next slide. So this, I'm going to turn it over to Elaine and she's going to walk through some urban renewal one oh one.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, usually we like to start out with the information for anybody in the public who is watching that urban renewal is not a new tax. We always find that is very important because urban renewal is highly misunderstood. Um, but it does not increase any property owners' property tax rates. Next slide. Urban renewal is funded off of property tax revenue, but it's funded off of the revenue of increased assessed values within an urban renewal area. In Oregon, we pay our property taxes and those property taxes go to all the regular taxing jurisdictions like the city and the county, um metro, other um taxing jurisdictions. There are only two reasons why property taxes increase in Oregon. One is the three percent limitation uh by that uh the assessor may increase annually and typically does unless we're in a recession. And then either substantial improvements or new construction of property. Otherwise, our property taxes only increase by three percent a year and all those property taxes go to the regular taxing jurisdictions. Next slide. When an urban renewal area is formed, go back one, please, in a city, the growth off of the properties assessed values through property tax revenue goes to that urban renewal area to the agency to spend within that urban renewal area. That diversion of property tax revenue is from the taxing jurisdictions. And again, it's not an increasing your property taxes. It's just that the regular taxing jurisdictions get a little less money than they would if an urban renewal area did not exist. And that is just for the urban renewal area. It is not citywide. Next slide. Urban renewal is not providing new money. It's diverting or changing the way that existing funds are allocated. The taxing jurisdictions continue receiving their money off of the frozen base assessed value of an urban renewal area and that frozen base is established by the assessor at the time the urban renewal area is formed. Frozen base doesn't mean that their property taxes are frozen. It just is a terminology that means the taxes off of the assessed value at the time the area is frozen, go to all the taxing districts. The taxes off the increased assessed value within that area goes to the urban renewal agency. In many urban renewal areas and in this area, it is certainly true that that growth may not have occurred but for urban renewal. If many of the infrastructure improvements that are outlined within this plan are not completed, that growth may not occur. So the infrastructure improvements are there to provide the capacity for that new development to happen. The taxing districts forego the taxes off of the growth in that area for the timeframe of the area. But at the end, when the new development has occurred and the infrastructure has caused that development to occur, all those taxing districts will end up getting an increased amount of taxes off of that higher fro- uh frozen value plus the increased tax base. So they will receive more over time in the future. Next slide. Local school districts are not impacted directly by urban renewal. Local school districts are funded through what's called the state school fund. That uh state school fund is funded on a per pupil allocation. And that per pupil allocation is not changed because you have adopted an urban renewal area within your community. Next slide. This just goes into a little bit more about those schools. So regular property taxing revenues go to taxing jurisdictions. And that urban renewal impact for regular taxing jurisdictions like the city or the county is a direct impact. Next slide. This is how schools are funded. It's a very confusing system. But the end result is there is a state school fund and that state school fund allocates money to all of the taxing, all of the different school districts across the state on a per pupil basis. If there are urban renewal impacts to the state school fund, the legislature then taps other other funding sources to fill the mandate for the state school fund. So they have other sources that they can go to to make sure that the schools are funded at that ratio that they have established. Next slide.
So this will transition back over to me. Um, so council members have seen uh this particular slide before in your briefing, so they'll kind of call this setting the stage. We've been doing a lot of planning work and economic development activity work over the course of the last six and a half years. A lot of this work began when we created the Newburg Economic Development Strategy and that was accepted by council in twenty sixteen. We also did a strategic tourism plan. We updated our transportation system plan. And then we also did the downtown improvement plan, uh otherwise known as the Newburg Downtown Improvement Plan. Uh, in twenty seventeen, we updated our water master plan. In twenty eighteen, our wastewater master plan. When we got to twenty nineteen, we updated our economic development strategy. But we also did our community visioning program. So that was completed in August of twenty nineteen. Um, then we had the Newburg Riverfront Master Plan that was done in twenty nineteen and completed, and we had our first iteration on our housing needs analysis. In twenty twenty, we updated our economic development strategy again, this time to in response to the pandemic in COVID nineteen. We updated our housing needs analysis. Uh, we did an economic opportunities analysis. Um, we started the urban renewal feasibility study. Uh, we created an urban renewal agency in twenty twenty. We did a lot of, almost all of the land use implementation for the riverfront in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty one was another busy year where we did updates to our functional plans, water, wastewater, stormwater and transportation to integrate the riverfront area and then worked on the urban renewal plan and report. So the graphics that are on this particular slide, the top one is our riverfront master plan area. The center is our downtown improvement plan area. And the graphic on the far right is the location of urban renewal districts throughout the state of Oregon, and there are over a hundred and thirty of them, and they're both in rural areas and in urban areas. Next slide. So um with the city council, they created an ad hoc committee. We called that the Ad Hoc Urban Renewal Committee. Uh, they met eight times in developing the urban renewal plan and report. Oh, we did outreach, given the COVID nineteen situation we were in, but we were pushing out uh information through social media. Uh, Lacy DiGra was taking care of that. We did fact sheets. We did videos. You may remember we did five videos when we were doing the feasibility study. We did another video as we were putting together the plan, the report. And of course, all that information was up on the webpage, so it's a robust. You can see all the videos, every committee meeting, uh, presentations and so forth that have been done. And then where available, we did community presentations, which are mostly virtual. We provided briefings to both the council and the planning commission, and we provided information to the taxing districts as we were preparing the plan and the report. Next slide. So this graphic is the urban renewal district. And so the committee had broken it into sub areas, and so we color coded those. The area is about six hundred acres in size. The maximum indebtedness amount identified in the plan is a hundred and six point four million. Uh, it includes that riverfront and downtown area, and it's connected by two corridors, one being Blaine Street and the other being River Street. And as Elaine indicated earlier in the presentation, urban renewal program does not increase your property taxes. Next slide. This next series, I'm going to kind of walk through the different projects that are within the different sub areas of the proposed plan. So the graphic on your left is the main mill site. And here there are transportation and other underground infrastructure identified. So the brown, our transportation corridors identified for improvements. Um, the green that you see down uh towards the kind of the bottom left is an esplanade. That esplanade was something that was identified by the community when we were putting together the riverfront master plan. On your right is Sub Area B, and that is south of the bypass and basically to the west of River Street and Rogers Landing Park. Uh, again, you can see an esplanade identified that goes along the top of the bluff, basically from River Street down to the end of Northeast Waterfront Street. The brown is transportation corridors and underground infrastructure improvements. Uh, there are a couple more green lines in here that are related to the bypass trail along River Street and on the north side of Fourteenth Street. And then there is a rail crossing improvements as new development occurs within the riverfront area. There will be a point in time where the traffic volume increases and ODOT rail will require that the rail crossings be improved. Next slide. On the left is Sub Area C, and this is north of the bypass. And this one is primarily wastewater infrastructure improvements. And so a new pump station, a new force main is along the north side of the bypass, uh, some new gravity mains decommissioning uh to existing pump stations. What's also important about this is there is a significant portion of Sub Area B that would actually drain into that pump station into the future. On the right is Sub Area D, and that is between the railroad tracks and River Street. And here we have an extension of Blaine Street that would connect down with College Street, improvements to College Street with infrastructure, and again, another railroad crossing. The purpose of the Blaine Street extension is again to address uh traffic volume increases that occur within the riverfront area. There were basically three main corridors coming in, Blaine Street, River Street and Wynewski Street. Next slide. On the left is Sub Area E, and that is between River Street and Wynewski. Um, here it is the River Street improvements. And so you will see a theme in these slides, basically starting at Fourteenth Street, improvements to River Street and certain infrastructure, underground infrastructure, all the way up to First Street. That's represented on the right hand slide in Sub Area F where you see a continuation of the River Street improvements. Next slide. Sub Area G again is on the left. This is Blaine Street and Blaine Street is really its uh its water infrastructure. Uh, there was an analysis we did in the area south of downtown and identified uh water deficiencies primarily related to fire flow. But the areas in green, other than Memorial Park and the PGE substations, is an area for uh future high density residential development. The final area is Sub Area H, and that is in the downtown. The brown line through the center of the graphic is uh First Street. That's the road diet. It's removing one travel lane in in certain areas, creating wider sidewalks, create that pedestrian amenity environment that the community identified when they created the downtown plan. The blue lines are all waterline infrastructure improvements. Uh, oldest part of town, basically in the downtown area, we have a lot of undersized lines. And to do those infill projects, um, requires waterline upgrades to occur. Towards the bottom of this graphic in the yellow solid line along Second Street is undergrounding overhead utility lines. So to achieve what's identified in the downtown plan for that uh residential development, the power and communication lines and so forth are in the way would need to be undergrounded, otherwise we would not be able to get the three, four story buildings that are identified in the downtown plan. Far right is again that final segment of River Street improvements. And then the circle areas, uh, there is one for an intersection improvement at Hancock and College Street. And then the other two circles are identifying uh new traffic signals, one at Hancock and Blaine and the other one at First and Blaine. Those signals are necessary again to address traffic volumes for a development occurring in the uh riverfront area. Then we kind of shaded the entire downtown area and through the process with the ad hoc committee identified the need for two additional public parking lots. Next slide. I will turn this back over to Elaine.
Thank you. As we said earlier, the impact of urban renewal is on the taxing jurisdictions. The impact to the city of Newburg over the projected thirty years is a little under twenty four million dollars. Those urban renewal projects will be used to spur development, which will increase Newburg's tax revenue in the future. The urban renewal area does not reduce their existing revenue, so there won't be a decrease in existing revenues. It just impacts future revenues on increased growth. Urban renewal leverages the city tax rate with other permanent rate taxes to create a larger funding source for project implementation. If we were unable to have an urban renewal area and you just had to rely on the city funding, you would get about a quarter of the total amount of funding that you would get by leveraging it through a renewal. Next slide. This shows the projected impacts to the city over each fiscal year. So urban renewal always starts off slowly because it is predicated on that increased growth annually. So the first year would be approximately forty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then that increases over time to fiscal year and two thousand and fifty-two, when it's a little over two million dollars. Next slide. There is a duration provision in the plan. A duration provision is not required by the Oregon revised statute. But in response to input from the taxing districts who agreed with the projects. Agreed with the philosophy of the plan, but asked for a duration provision. One was put into the plan. The plan will not exceed a thirty year timeframe. And in addition to that, there will be a review of the plan every five years with a required consult and confer process with all of the different taxing jurisdictions. In addition to that, there is a statutory requirement for an annual report. And that that annual report be sent to all of the different taxing jurisdictions once it is completed. Next slide. Back to Doug.
So with all of that background information, which was all shared with the ad hoc committee, they met, they had their final meeting on May twenty-fourth. And at that meeting, they recommended that the urban renewal plan and the report be forwarded to the Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency. And for referral to taxing districts. They also made a recommendation to the city council to adopt the plan. Next slide. So that moved us into the consultant confer process. And so the agency on June seventh received the plan, referred that to the taxing districts. Staff sent out that notice to all of the taxing districts. We did that by certified mail, and we also did by email and confirmation of receipt of that email. We met with all the taxing districts except for PCC and the Education Service District. They each declined to get a formal presentation, but we did give a presentation to all the other districts. There is a forty-five day requirement in ORS four fifty-seven for the taxing districts to review the information and material. And provide comments and recommendations back to the city council for consideration. We received no comments back from any of the taxing districts through that consult and confer process. Next slide. We also had to go through a step of reviewing the proposed urban renewal plan against Newburgh's comprehensive plan. So I'm not going to read all of these, but we went through in detail through all of the elements of our comprehensive plan. Next slide. We also looked at additional documents. So our transportation, water, wastewater and stormwater are all sub elements of our comprehensive plan. And ORS four fifty-seven also requires that if you have an economic development plan that we evaluate that. So we did all of those evaluations against our comp plan and our economic development strategy. Next slide. We also had to do that similar process with Yam Hill County's comprehensive plan. And so there's a few slides here. Again, I'm not going to read all of the details, but we went through their comprehensive plan and identified those goals and policies. That were applicable to the proposed urban renewal plan. Next slide. So this next slide continues on with the different elements of Yam Hill County's comprehensive plan. So a few examples, we had to look at water resources, open space, transportation and public facilities and services. Next slide. There was more to the Yam Hill County comprehensive plans. So we had to look at Parks and Rec, Willamette Greenway. As again, a couple of examples. Next slide. Finally, for on the Yam Hill County side, we had to look at their transportation system plan. And the county also has an economic development plan called Grow Yam Hill County. And so we reviewed that and prepared findings for those components as well. Next slide. We took all of that analysis to the planning commission. They held a hearing on July twenty-second. They adopted resolution two thousand and twenty-one, three seventy-three, and they found that the proposed Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan was in conformance. With both the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and the Yam Hill County Comprehensive Plan. They also recommended that the city council adopt the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan. Next slide. In parallel with the confer or the consult confer process, there's also provision in statute. Because some of the area that's in this plan is outside of the city limits, but within the urban growth boundary, approximately two hundred and forty-four acres. Down in the riverfront area. So we gave presentations to the county in May, June. And then again in July, and we discussed the plan. The county adopted a resolution at their meeting on July twenty-nine. And in that resolution, they were approving the urban renewal plan, but it was contingent upon a ballot vote. Affirming the plan by residents of the city of Newburgh. Next slide. So I was kind of started off with the first slide. So we are at the end of this. So we're here this evening to take public testimony on the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan. And for the city council to consider the Board of Commissioners' order resolution. We are not proposing to adopt the ordinance that's in your packet. We actually would be looking to delay that. And probably until the November fifteenth meeting, depending on direction the council takes. Under the topic later in the agenda about the referral to the voters. Next slide. So here's where Elaine and I are going to stop and provide the opportunity to turn back over to the mayor to see if there's any questions.
All right, folks, you heard the question, asking for questions. So if you have any, please let me know.
So you want to go ahead and take down the PowerPoint, please?
There we go. All right, let's, all right, Elise.
Yeah, I think I have three questions, and you took down the PowerPoint, but I think it's on slide eighteen. There is a bullet that I wanted to just see if you could provide further commentary on growth. I think the comment was around does not impact current revenue, but impacts further increased revenue. If you could unpack that, that bullet and what that would look like for. Say other county services, for example, that could be impacted. I would be interested in hearing your perspective. What that, what that point is.
Yes, this is Elaine. I'll go over that again. So that urban renewal in Oregon is confusing, so I appreciate your question. At the time this plan gets adopted, if it does. All of the taxing districts, including the city itself, will continue getting their permanent rate property taxes. Off of the assessed value at the time that this was adopted. But that three percent increase, so let's say the first year property tax values increased by three percent, the assessed values. So the taxes increased by three percent. The Urban Renewal Agency gets that money. So at the time the area is established, all of the other property taxing jurisdictions will get their money from that. But any increase after that establishment goes to the Urban Renewal Agency. So I think the side she was questioning was eighteen, correct, Councilor? Yes. So it's that bullet that. Doesn't reduce existing revenues, but impacts the future revenues off of increased growth. So when there is increased growth just within that urban renewal area, the taxes off that will go to the Urban Renewal Agency to do those projects. That Doug described.
If I can just, Elaine, just to underscore what you said, because again, you know, if you look at it, they owe twenty-three million dollars. But again, what that is, if I understand correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong. Is that that is the projected three percent of taxes on that district. So downtown and Blaine and River Street. That so it's just merely taxes that are being put to urban renewal so we can leverage to get the infrastructure in. Is that, am I following?
It's that three percent, but it is also expecting new growth will occur because you put that infrastructure in. So I believe, and Doug can correct me, but I believe we use six point five percent.
Yes, we did. That was the growth rate.
As the growth rate, which means in addition to that three percent. We all know in your riverfront area, that has been sitting foul for a number of years and no growth has occurred. So you're not even going to get your three percent off of that property in the future. You're going to be getting less because anything there is depreciating. So this is saying, because you're able to add infrastructure, the growth is going to happen there because of that infrastructure. And you will be getting more growth than the three percent.
I think another way to maybe respond to that mayor is in all of the modeling that was done. By Tiberia Solutions, the fiscal year ending two thousand and twenty-one. The modeling indicated that the assessed value within that six hundred acre area. Was estimated to be about a hundred and forty-seven million dollars. These numbers need to be confirmed by the assessor. Over that thirty year period, if you just went with a flat three percent increase. Essentially, no new development, just a three percent increase. Over that thirty year period, and again, these are estimated numbers. That assessed value within that six hundred acre area would come out to about three hundred and sixty-seven million. Okay, that's just one way of looking at the numbers. But with that six and a half percent growth rate that the committee identified. And so you took the three percent, you took this new development that was. Supported by doing transportation and infrastructure improvements. That estimated assessed value would be a little over one billion dollars.
All right, let's see. Was there another question? At least, did you have another question?
Well, just because there are so many things on the call here. I think I still have further. Explanation. So what I'm trying to get at is that X amount of dollars, whatever it ended up being. That is, you know, now set aside for the infrastructure buildout of urban renewal in that new growth area. Is that taking away from other services that if, which we all know, area wouldn't happen if this wasn't built out. Understand that. Is it, does it have the potential to take away from other services that the current tax system would support?
And I think, Council, I would respond to that. That's why we went through the consultant for a process with all of the taxing districts. So that they could evaluate what that impact would be on them. And in the end, after that, we actually gave a little more than the forty-five statutory timeline. We got no written comments or recommendations back from any of the taxing districts.
Thank you. And then the last question that I have is just around the. One of the last slides around the consideration commissioner out to a vote. When you say that, you know, we're going to later in the meeting, talk about delaying till November. Is that required, or is that your recommendation that we need to consider legally? Do, what does consider mean, James? In this situation?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Counselor. So as far as the. The decision on, on whether to wait or not. The, the risk, if you will, of, I guess ultimately, one of the questions is, is do you, do you want to proceed? Despite the condition that was placed on the county's, the county's kind of affirmative vote, if you will. If you, oh, go ahead.
That's my question is what authority do they have over us, given the six year process that we've gone through to place that? Stipulation and what are the ramifications if we were to go against that?
Yeah, yeah. So it's not, it's not completely clear whether they actually have the, the legal authority to do that. That's an, that's a item that we would look for some guidance from the city as far as whether we want to challenge that. You know, if, if we do, obviously, there's, there's the legal argument and whether the statute provides room. There's a question of in approving the plan, was that, was that approval? What type of decision was that for the county? And there is some case law to support that we could, we could get into deeper. But there is some case law support that's a land use decision, and maybe that's a overstep, if you will. To, to elect, to kind of tie it to, to a referendum to the voters. But it's not, we don't have any firm case law that aligns with this particular fact pattern, so it's, it's, it's unclear. You know, of course, there's also the, frankly, the. The concern that if you choose to challenge the county on, on their decision. You know, any sort of victory likely would be end up in a. Sending the decision back down to the county again, and how they would respond to a higher court sending it back down. You know, is, is unclear as well.
I think, Counselor, I might add. You know, we're trying to keep kind of the, the issue of the vote versus the urban renewal plan. But I'm hopefully, if, if Dan doesn't wince at me too much, I'll kind of lay out a couple of options here, and James will correct me. So we're taking testimony tonight on the proposed urban renewal plan. We have a resolution from the county. I received the written copy this afternoon. Where they approved the plan, but with this caveat that they had to go to an affirmative vote, the citizens. And that is because there were two hundred and forty-four acres of land within the proposed plan area that were outside of the city. You've heard me say before, we are in the process of annexing much of that land. And that will, will be completed by the end of the calendar year. And so by the time we get to the end of the calendar year, there would be approximately fifty-four acres of that land that would be outside of the city limits. And that fifty-four acres of land primarily includes the old Newburgh landfill, Rogers Landing. A little bit of land that we are in the process of acquiring for water treatment plant. Another property down off the end of Waterfront Street, two properties off of Weatherly and. College Street, and then one property that's partially in the city and out of the city that's off of Wynewski Street. Okay? So one of the options is that you could wait until we get done with the annexations. We could go back and redo the plan. The financials and so forth, redo the legal description boundaries and so forth to exclude those islands or things that are on the perimeters. Because there would not be in the city at that point in time. What that does is it delays. What that would do then, it would not require the county to approve the plan. It would only leave all of the taxing districts to go through the consultant confer process. But what that does, it also delays implementation of the plan by a year. So in the plan now, it's modeled to begin to get the, the first tax increment revenues ending in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. They would move it out to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four. Then, as our legal counsel indicated, there's this kind of third leg, well, second leg would be. With, you know, what was imposed, is that legal or not? Then the third is to go to an election in November, which we'll talk about later in the agenda. So those are kind of your three primary, and then there's, of course, there's different subsets off of each one of those. It's always important to remember that in the urban renewal process, at the conclusion, there is a referendum process.
All right, Professor President Finley.
I have a couple of questions. The first one was going to be my second question, but since you were just talking about this. I was, I listened and was virtually present at that Board of Commissioners meeting. And Commissioner Burshower took it upon herself to speak on behalf of TVF and R. Indicating, implying that they wouldn't build a rural fire station in Yam Hill County because of this. Some of those other things. Commissioner Sterrett stated that that was a compelling reason not to vote for this or vote for it with this, with this caveat. Is there, we, since we now know that we've gotten a letter from TVF and R explicitly. we, since we now know that we've gotten a letter from TVF and R explicitly stating that those things are not true. Is there an option to go back to the board of commissioners and ask them to reconsider this decision based on that information? But also, I know one of the things that Commissioner Sterrett was concerned about was making sure that residents of Newburgh know what urban renewal is and that they have a way to weigh in on this. And I don't disagree with that. I disagree that that hasn't happened at this point in a different way than sending it to a vote. But, you know, and it came up at the commissioners meeting, is there a way for us to sort of push this out on social media and other places and do something like a survey, some education, some surveys that we can get some residents of Newburgh to weigh in on this? And between that and the information from TVF and R, is that enough to ask them to reconsider this decision?
Think maybe we kick that one to James. I don't know, James, if.
You know, on the, on the reconsideration of the decision by the county, you know, some of that's going to be driven by the county's rules. So I certainly can take a look at what those are, but typically, you know, the way it's structured, there's sometimes certain timeframes within which the county can, can reevaluate or rescind certain decisions. I, I can kind of investigate that further, but submitting that additional information and seeking that is, is something we can explore.
All right, did you have another question?
I do, and this is just informational, and I may have missed it in the presentation. And since I was on that committee, isn't it true that thirty years is the outside number? If these projects were completed in say, ten years one project would, so what we're looking at is thirty years being the outside, but there's a possibility that it could end before that thirty years if this goes really well and these projects are completed.
Counselor, that is, that is correct. And so with the duration provision that's in the plan, it would end at thirty years. And that's thirty years from the first year we get tax collections. There's, again, you have to read every word in the plan. But if things materialize faster and projects have more value than what we modeled, that yes, it could be done quicker. Generally speaking, you know, you're probably looking at about year twenty five would be about the last year you could issue debt and pay off that debt over a five year period, given how the financing markets work today. But it could be quicker. But it would be no longer than thirty years.
All right, other questions, folks or comments? One thing, you know, I did want to stress again that this is only for the area that is identified as the urban renewal district. This is not citywide. It is that area that we are focused on to try to develop. Simply put, not to be too blunt, but economic development and jobs is the focus of this. That's the focus of this work done through infrastructure. All right, any other questions or comments, folks? Yep, Elise.
I just also really want to emphasize the amount of work that has gone into this and the amount of public that has been taken. And I mean, really to Doug Elaine's credit, the amount of vast work that has been done around this and the business community bipartisan support for this work. And so I do want to just go on the record that it is perplexing to me that we are here having this conversation, six years into work that has been just scoured over by our community development team. And so it feels quite frankly disrespectful and to our team that has spent a ton of time doing this. So I do just want to out release say thank you to Doug and his team for enduring through this and that it has my full and absolute support. And I think is a completely nonpartisan issue.
You know, again, we're getting, it looks like Elaine, if you can go ahead and answer the question, we've got to answer a question through chat, which we we generally don't do because of public comment, but we will try to give an answer here if we can.
So the question in the chat is, please clarify, does the renewal area become assessed at a higher rate because of the development area along the urban renewal area, but not necessarily all residents of Newburgh? And urban renewal does not cause any property to be assessed at a higher rate than it would normally be assessed unless there is new development on that property. So if there's new development on property A and property B is across the street, property B's development will still only have its assessed value increased by three percent per year. The development on property A, if it's new construction, will be evaluated by the assessor as all new construction is and given an assessed value. The fact that it's in an urban renewal area has no relevance to what that assessed value is established by the assessor. It's just that the taxes off that will go to the urban renewal area. So the fact that you're in an urban renewal area doesn't lower your taxes. It doesn't increase your taxes if you're across the street from it. It doesn't lower your taxes. It doesn't increase your taxes. Taxes in Oregon are basically that three percent increase unless you do a substantial improvement on new construction.
And I just, just to underscore this again, just, okay, so in the instance, we would very much like to see a hotel downtown in Newburgh, okay, providing it is in the urban, urban reserve area or urban renewal area. Right? That, that hotel comes online, the additional revenue from that development goes to urban renewal to continue to develop the infrastructure for other projects in the area. Nobody else is impacted at all. So that's it, I think. Okay, go ahead, Jules.
Thank you, Rick. I think it's important to highlight what you mentioned earlier about interpretation, especially talking about urban renewal. And how if there's so much confusion right now with us just having this conversation, how am I supposed to talk to our constituents about urban renewal, especially thinking that a lot of these areas are fairly heavily dense by the Latinx population? So their information is going to be like backtrack even further. So I think there's a huge emphasis that we need to continue to educate folks and really put it as a priority. So thank you for bringing that up earlier.
Good, thank you. Are there other questions or comments, folks? Okay, go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, and also more of a comment than a question, maybe some could confirm. There might be folks watching or listening that would, that might ask, well, why wouldn't they want it to to go to a vote? You know, if we are open to hearing feedback from folks and, you know, to echo what folks already said, there's been a very intentional process over the last six years of receiving feedback. And it's not that we, again, I should all speak for myself, that I would not be in favor of a vote, but it is also a costly process. Right? So I know that as we've gone through previous city processes, I'm thinking about, you know, the search for police chief and whatnot, folks express concern about spending money and this would again be an additional cost for the city to be, to run this this election. So that's something else I think that should be taken into consideration.
All right, thank you. And yeah, and again, just to dovetail it a little bit on what Bryce just said. If there are people that are going to view this at some point here tonight, the next week, whenever it is, please, if you have any questions about urban renewal. You know, it, if it, you know, whether or not you have questions, you can check the website, you can contact one of us and we will try to find whatever answers that you, that you might have. All right, other, other comments, folks. Okay, Doug, are we looking for the, go ahead?
I'm just going to say, Mayor, since we are in a hearing, we are at that point where council was asking staff and our consultant questions. We still have that opportunity for the public to provide testimony in this, both in support and or in opposition. And make sure we don't forget that step.
Right. So that's what I was just going to ask, whether or not we have received any requests for public comments, Sue, on this particular item. I will open the public comment section of this hearing now. It's open.
Mr. Mayor, we received what is in the packet that has been given to council. I did not have anyone register to speak tonight.
Okay. All right. So again, we don't have anyone registered at this point. Go ahead, Bryce.
Quick question. I, I'm definitely hearing that no one registered. I'm seeing a comment from Johnson. Is it possible for folks to be able to provide a comment even if they didn't register? And I'm not saying that Johnson has to, but just wanted to know if Johnson did want to, if that option would be available.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yes, please.
Counselor Colfield, we have a system for registration, so we know who is planning to speak. It helps aid the process, but yes, technically I can promote anyone. It's up to you how long you want the meeting to go. There are thirty three people on the attendee side. So if you want to let me know how to proceed, I will accommodate your request.
James.
And, and what I would recommend, or I guess the way that this looks, because there is a process and it's laid, it's laid out for the city, in part in, in the rules, is that maybe with respect to this particular matter, the, the council should should vote on whether they want to essentially temporarily suspend those in order to allow that, that, that public comment.
Okay, if you'd like it, I think the suggestion of a time limit is probably good as we have the other business this evening. So if someone would like to make a motion to that effect, we will go from there.
Yeah, I would have moved to temporarily suspend the requirements. Pen, in agreement on how much time, we'd like your public comment.
Can you give us a suggestion of the amount of time, Bryce?
Oh, gosh. Uh, you know, I like to do things collectively. Other counselors, do it. What do you feel and thinking?
All right, I'll second it and with a recommendation of a, of ninety seconds.
Person, but what would total timeline be? For until everyone, give everyone a shot? Ninety seconds?
Let's, let's, I, I would suggest we limit a total time. So if we're going to do this, then let's go fifteen minutes in, in two minute intervals. How's that? Does that work? That would, that's not now.
That could work. I know Sue, Sue said that there's like thirty two or so folks wanting, I would be interested to get an idea of like who would want to comment and then make an informed decision based on that. Because if it's two, then it's like, cool, we can go with the normal five minutes per public comment that keeps us under the fifteen. If it's all thirty two, then we probably can't do, you know, five minutes. But it would be interesting to get an idea of who would be interested.
All right, listen, looking at the attendees list, if you would like to make a comment under the consideration of time, please raise your hand and that will give us an idea. I see I've got one hand raised. If someone would like to raise their hand to make a comment, I will appreciate it. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So maybe this is a moot point, actually. I see.
John Bridges has submitted a chat.
John, right, I've got John Bridges. All right. Let's, all right, we've only got one person. So shall we vote to give a couple of minutes to the one person who has raised his hand? And we got a motion to that effect?
The motion.
I moved to.
I have a motion on that needs to be voted on.
Here we have a motion for that either needs to be voted on or amended.
The motion on the floor is to suspend the council rules and allow for anyone who wishes to testify on ordinance twenty twenty one, twenty eight eighty five to give them a time limit of two minutes with a total for fifteen.
Okay. All right, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and we will solve it that way. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. Okay, and that passes unanimously. So, all right, if we can promote Mr. John Bridges, please, we will take his comment.
I'm just looking for him. Sorry, it's a long list. John, I think he's on here. It's just John.
He's on the top of mine. Oh, now he's gone again.
He should be.
All right, it looks like there is Mr. Bridges right there. Good evening, Mr. Bridges. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. So as you may know, I'm the chair of the advisory committee. I did listen to some of the questions and the comments. I would mention that I spent a sizable amount of time on the phone with Commissioner Sterrett today. And I went through a variety of discussions about how difficult this type of procedure is to explain to voters. And I analogized it with like putting her county budget to the voters every year. We would never ask to do that because it's, it's something that people really need to study. They need to be invested in it. They need to garner understanding of it. And then they need to do the representative process of, of deciding. I don't think she would change her mind. I discussed both the TVF and R letter. You know, I, I discussed that there was misleading information in the last referendum that I anticipate misleading information coming up. Many of you know that somebody has written an op ed letter and we've tried to counteract that op ed letter. I've reached out to the city of Dundee because there's some illusion in the op ed piece that the city of Dundee is dissatisfied with their urban renewal district. I've spoken with the, the administration and, and a counselor. And they've been very satisfied. In fact, they're undergrounding a bunch of utilities with urban renewal district funds that had they not had it in place as ODOT's doing reconstruction on ninety nine W, they would have missed out on the opportunity. And so they really see it as a tool that gave them opportunity that wouldn't exist otherwise. I also discussed with Commissioner Sterrett about how this is focused on industrial living wage jobs and that seems to not be being received as it really is a priority for the city of Newburgh. If I, you know, I can't tell you what the law is surrounding having one jurisdiction tell another jurisdiction that you have to hold a vote. But that does not seem right. My sense of the law oftentimes is if something doesn't seem right, it probably isn't right. But I can't tell you, I researched that. What I would like the city to do is I would like the city to fast track those annexations and eliminate all that county property from the plan and, and move forward with. You know, if someone wants to refer it to the vote later on, that's their prerogative. But I don't think you should be spending your resources on a vote in November. Instead, I think we should cut the county out of the process of having a say in what I think is essentially city government. So that's, that's the direction I'd like to see the city move. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Good folks. All right, John, thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. I do not see that anyone else has raised their hand. So hearing that, and if you are not, you this is the last chance. Otherwise, hold you, you will have to hold your peace. All right. All right. So I do not see any. So Doug and Elaine, if it's all right with you, I will close public comment. It is closed. All right. What would you like next, Doug and Elaine?
So the purpose tonight was to hold the hearing and to take testimony. So now the council, I believe, and James can help me through this, because we haven't got to talk face to face about it, is when do you want to continue your consideration of this? So this was your first reading of the ordinance and taking testimony. When do we want to have the second reading? Earlier, I mentioned me possibly doing that on November fifteenth. That would provide time for the council to have a conversation about going to a vote or not. Another option could be to continue this. Let me pull up my calendar again to October eighteenth. As one option that will still provide you the opportunity to have your discussion on another agenda item this evening. And if we're not ready by October eighteenth, then we could continue that to November fifteenth, kind of a thing that locking up.
And if we're not ready by October eighteenth, then we could continue that to November fifteenth, kind of a thing of locking up the stairs kind of approach.
All right, thoughts, anyone?
James, I'm not sure if that sounds reasonable, or Dan, is kind of some options?
No, I think, I think that that makes a lot of sense. It's the two options. Dan, I don't know if you had anything further to add, but I think that that, that's, that's what's in front of the council here.
Yeah, it's a little awkward in the sense of timing of the two items, and, you know, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but you know, certainly continuing to date certain down the line makes sense and gives us some flexibility. And Doug, a little bit of time off in the process would be good.
All right, folks, any thoughts on that? We've got a couple of dates put out there. Any thoughts? Go ahead, Bryce.
Doug, on a clarification, if we, if we were to delay to November or walk it up from October, pretend to November, if you, if I heard you correctly, you said that would delay the entire process by approximately a year. Is that right?
No, councillor, so if you, and I'll go just go to the November fifteenth because it's the easiest. If, if you continue this to a date certain of November fifteenth, that would be after a vote if you chose to put it on a ballot of November second. So then you would have a vote, the vote would not be certified yet, but you'd have a vote, you'd have results, you theoretically then come back, you could consider the ordinance if you chose to adopt it on November fifteenth, then I have a whole series of requirements and ORS four fifty-seven I have to go through. I have to publish notice within four days. I have to get information to the county assessor. One of the triggers of this is it's a cutoff date for assessment years, and so having the plan approved, and we, and then there's an issue about if you adopt the ordinance and the effective date. And so if we did all that, we believe that if you, and I'll say this again when we get to that point in the agenda, if you waited until the fifteenth, we could still meet the timelines and get everything approved if the vote was affirmative by the end of the calendar year, so that we would still then be in a position to start tax, tax increment collection revenues fiscally or ending twenty-twenty-three.
I see. So it's the process, I'm trying to remember what you said. If we were to go through a process of annexing the land, and I think John had talked about fast-tracking that, that would be the process that would extend it by a year. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. Given the timing of when we've got things we have to notify the state with, get to hearings by our own local bodies for review and have the effective dates of those ordinances. I cannot do that and redo the plan, reconvene, committee, do all the consultant confer by the end of December of twenty-twenty-one.
That makes sense.
Okay, folks, what do you think on the dates? Bryce?
Sorry, Rick, be that person again. To clarify, if we do a second read in October, that would by default, in some ways, like put us in a position to vote prior to, like, following the recommendation or whatever to vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, I look at that more, councillor, as just kind of of a placeholder. It depends on how your conversation goes on your second item on the agenda tonight. If you would refer this to the voters or not.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for a date certain, and so I'm trying to give you some flexibility.
Is there, anybody have any opposition to putting it on the October, knowing that it may be just a placeholder and then move forward? Anybody have any opposition to that? Okay. Do you need a vote that way, Doug?
I think it would be good to have a motion and a vote for that, so it's on the record.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we set the date for October, did we say eighteenth? As the second reading for this ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second, this is true.
Goes with a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. Okay, unanimous. So, all righty, thank you, and we will be back on that subject now. Looking at the agenda, is there, is there any reason or, except for Port Carn and the SDCs, that that we don't go on to talking about the election now, or would you rather wait for that to the end of the meeting? Anyone? All right, hearing no great opinion, let's go on with the next item on the agenda then. We're on to new business. This is item eight, a system development charge update, and I believe City Engineer Karen Hoffman.
I got a promoter. I need to promote her, sorry.
Working, I'm working on it.
Obsessed with the PowerPoint. Got to get the PowerPoint up. Okay. Thanks.
Hey, we could have let the city manager do the report.
I vote for that. Sorry, Toto's giving on its last legs here. So, okay, there we go.
Right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an update for the council. And we'll look to see if we can get some, some more direction. On April nineteenth, we provided you with some information about systems development charges, and we got feedback to explore different options and conduct listening sessions. Unfortunately, those listening sessions haven't happened other than one or two. And so we're still hoping to make some of those things happen. We did do a three-minute or less video prepared by Lacy Diekraut, and we also sent out a survey to residents and business owners. We got twenty-six responses from those surveys. And then in that three-minute video, we only had fifty-eight one-minute views. Very few people got all the way through. So just something to keep in mind. So I'm going to start by going back through a couple of things quickly, just to remind everybody about what STCs are and how they're implemented, and then we'll, towards the end, we'll talk about what possible changes may be if the council so chooses. Next slide, please. So what are systems spell in charges? There are one-time fees that are charged on new development, certain types of redevelopment or changes in use. We cannot assess these five years down the road or at some other time. They are a one-time fee, and they are dictated, the statutes are ORS two twenty-three, two ninety-seven to three fourteen. Next slide, please. So STCs are used to help pay for existing and planned infrastructure to serve development. Their one-time method of financing infrastructure to respond to growth. And then, and Newburgh adopted our first STC ordinance in nineteen ninety-one. So, next slide, please. I put this slide in to help address Robert Suppy's comment. I believe you all received that on STCs. So STC calculations are based on three basic things. Capacity that's already in the system for future growth. So existing infrastructure that's in place but has excessive capacity that can provide for future growth. It's capacity that needs to be, needs to be constructed in the future or in the system for future growth. Those are the projects on the adopted list, and those relate to the capacity for growth. So we may have a, a twenty-four-inch water pipe, say, that needed to be installed, and we would say that some portion of that, say forty-four percent, is attributed to future growth. So the improvement fee for that is only the forty-four percent. It would not be the entire project cost. And then compliance costs, so administrative plus cost, master planning, et cetera. So, next slide, please. Quick thing, wastewater and water and stormwater systems are based on water meter size for the water STC. Wastewater STC is based on the proposed fixture units, and the stormwater STC is based on the new purpose surface. So it's all based on the impacts of the development, impacts that the development has on the system. Next slide. Transportation. So this is the one I think that gets the most concern. And so how we determine what the system development charge would be is we determine the type of use. From that, we get a trip rate for the PMPG. So again, we're strictly looking at the PMPG. We determine if there are any pass-by or diverted trips. So that means if you were coming home from work and you stop at the grocery store on the way home, and then you stop at the childcare facility and pick up your child, those all reduce the trip rates because you're making multiple stops on that one trip. We then multiply by one point six eight to convert from vehicle trips to person trips. Again, that allows us to use the STC money for sidewalks and bike lanes also. And then if there is a previous use, we subtract those number of trips from the previous use, and then the calculation is the the equation that follows. So the STCs are based on the number of person trips times the size of the facility, normally in thousand square feet, and then by cost per trip. Next slide, please. This is one that I put in as we have heard a lot about change in use examples. So this is just trying to give an idea of the differences. So if someone was going taking a single-family resident and training it, turning it into a restaurant, excuse me, you know, you, you see the difference in the trip rates, and this is just strictly vehicle trip rates. So that's where your difference comes in and where the STC would, would trigger for a change of use example. Dan, the second one from the bottom where you see restaurant to office. So actually, a restaurant has a higher trip rate than an office facility does, which means that they an office moved into a restaurant, they would not actually pay an STC in that scenario. So, next slide, please. So how the transportation STC changed in twenty-seventeen, this is another one we've heard about. There used to be a downtown waiver that was provided, and that downtown waiver was eliminated. We did change the calculation to use person trips instead of vehicle trips. And then we actually automatically indexed all the STCs based on excuse me, inflation for all of the utility rates. So the table ten that you see there was the table that was provided to the council in twenty-seventeen when the new transportation STC was implemented, and you see what the difference, percent increase differences were at that point in time. So, next slide. Before I get into the reductions, I did want to address one of the the other comment that we received from Mr. Suppy was about the water treatment plant and whether or not we should be using water STCs to to purchase that property. That property could be up to forty-four percent STC eligible. The concern is that our water STCs have a a large section of debt service. We pay about eight hundred thousand dollars for the debt service out of our water STC, and the amount of water STCs that we receive on a yearly basis runs right somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars. So the money is not available there. The other note I will say is that the, the treatment plant purchase has been in the water rate models for the last several years as coming out of water rates in particular, and the water rates have not been increased over the last several years other than inflationary increases. So just kind of to give you a little bit of feedback on that. Certainly willing to take additional questions if there are any. So ideas that we heard on options for STC reductions, here's a whole list. I'm not sure that I'm going to explain them all to you. If you have questions about specific ones, feel free. They were just kind of thoughts that we had come up with for reductions. They include waivers for a variety of different things. Discounts for ADUs, increasing STCs in a riverfront area instead, and some other options. Next slide, please. So another option is to revise the methodology. And again, this is, some of these are specifically for transportation, but not all of them. So we could do a wholesale, whole-scale traffic study for the city to use those numbers rather than using the ITE numbers, which could be more relevant in the city Newburgh. We could also redo the methodology to increase some diverted pass-by trip deductions, remove person trips. We could also remove projects. That was one of the things that came up at our last meeting was we could remove projects and then pay for those projects out of a bond measure which would require everyone with a tax bill to pay those bond measures back. Some project could be Mountain View Drive, Main Street, River Street, including all utilities, Signal at Foothills and College, Riverfront Pub Station, which Doug mentioned in the urban renewal portion, which includes some gravity lines, some force mazes, and they're removing the Charles and Andrews pub stations. Next slide, please. So some quick options that we came up with. You know, some things that could happen relatively quickly. We could reduce all our, our STCs by fifty percent for a five-year window to determine if this helps for some economic development. I just threw some ideas down. We could do it for everybody. We could do it for specifically local businesses for change in use, residential, family wage jobs, you know, a variety of things. One thing I did note on one of the bullets there is that there will be an impact on what projects can be completed and when they can be completed. So water projects will be the hardest hit, as we spoke about a minute ago. Our water STCs tend to just be enough to pay for the debt service that's there. So projects may need to be postponed, or rates need to be increased to cover those essential projects, if need be. One other impact would be is if a development came in and that project was necessary to serve that development, the developer would have to pay to construct that project. Another option would be to reduce STCs for accessory dwellings, similar to, this should be EDUs. We do have a provision for smaller units pay a smaller STC. So we could reduce the STCs for ADUs to help for that affordable housing type of thing. Next slide. Some other long-term options, updating the methodology as we talked about. Use the information we gather if we do a short-term reduction to determine other possible reductions. Another one that has come up is about allowing businesses to transfer trips when they move. So this would remove the change in use. So actually, when we reduce, change, remove the change in use, what it would do is it would affect the biz or the property rather than the business. So say the health club had had their facility, they picked, moved to another location, they would take their trips with them. The place, the resident, the resident, the location they were at before would then end up with zero STCs attached to them, and then the new tenant that came in would have to pay all of the STCs associated with, with their use. So some thoughts. And again, this is not meant to be a final discussion with the council, just kind of giving you an update about where we are, where, you know, to provide some, hopefully provide some direction or additional thoughts as we move forward. So that's the last of what I have. Questions?
Karen, the, Robert Suppy, and I don't see that he's on the call, actually. But he provided a public But he provided a public comment regarding transportation, particularly in the methodology of of of. Including additional, could you, could you respond to that if you have?
Yeah, that was, so he had indicated, he was trying to find my, I printed it out and I. Can't find it in my papers. Here it is. He had indicated that. That a portion of all S T C eligible projects that was expected to be paid for with S T Cs was used in the calculation. And he said that when we made the change, the entire S T C eligible portion of the project was used in the calculation. And that is correct. Okay, so Robert Suppy is on phone if you wanted to have him.
Let me ask, make sure that before we go to public comment, how's about we ask if anybody has any questions or comments regarding this at this point? Questions particularly of Karen. Go ahead, Congressman Finley.
I have a question and a statement. So my question is about. The transfer of S T Cs, like if you're moving businesses. So can you walk me through that a little bit more? Because a health club comes into one location and they pay for five trips. Their S T Cs cover five trips. And then they want to move to another location. And I get why they, the new location would need those S T Cs, right? Because we're putting some stress. Some more stress on that system that hasn't already been there. However, then it doesn't make sense to me that if a new business wants to come into that existing. Property, that they would also pay the five trips. Does that make sense? Like I understand why S T Cs for a new construction, new building. New places would need to have those full number of trips. But I don't quite understand why the first business pays for five trips and then the second. Business pays for five trips when they come in. I am certain there is an answer there. That I don't, that is more complex than I. Made that sound, but just, you know, for myself and I think the public at large would like to understand why that is.
Yes, so they they wouldn't pay those five trips again. So say it was somebody who had five trips, they picked up and moved somewhere else. The next. Business that moved in, their trip rate is going to be three. In that scenario, they wouldn't pay anything because the five trips had already been paid. Okay, so but say the five trips have been paid, but the new business that comes in. Generates eight trips. They're going to pay for the three. So they pay for the incremental impact. The challenge with that, so if you say that the the S T C stays at the address, basically. When the business moves to a new address. Then they they don't take those trips with them. Because they're associated with the address in the way that the methodology is set up today. So they would, so when they go to that new address, the new address has the same issue if they, excuse me. If they had. They they already paid for three trips and this business was going to create five. They would pay the two. So they would pay the incremental difference between the two. Does that help answer that question?
Let's see. All right. Other other questions or comments for Karen before we go to public comment? Oh, sorry, Stephanie.
That's okay. I just have one more comment and this is going to be on my soapbox for a minute. So I know it's not the exact same thing, but this is all dominoes, right? So when we talk about before, when we talk about urban renewal and we talk about S T Cs, those are, those things are related. And so when we get hamstrung on a project as big as urban renewal. Then what we're looking at is how do we balance that out? Because I think this council and this city staff has worked so hard to sort of take pieces from all the different places in order to. Make things work in our community where we're finding jobs, we're finding more affordable housing. But we need pieces from each of those places and it's really hard for me to conceptualize when we've worked on this project for so long. About how we then have the conversation around S T Cs lowering while we're sitting on a project that would. You know, have jobs and other industry coming into our community. So having said that, I would say for me personally, I would like to see, I would be interested in seeing sort of a balance. Of both some short term and some long term options. So maybe looking at how we configure those in a long term. But also talking about what we can do to have at least a tiny bit of relief in the short term. So that we can court some of, you know, what we need into this community. That's my two cents.
Other comments, folks. Before we go to public comment, I, this, this subject is very interesting, very. Very, very much into, go ahead Bryce, I'll let you go.
No, go ahead, Rick. Finish.
Go ahead Bryce, seriously, go ahead. Go for it. Thanks.
Yeah, um, yeah, so you asked for, you know, more so direction. I absolutely would be in favor of. Being more particular on where we can provide. Exceptions is maybe the wrong word. But I'm reminded of work, you know, that we've done earlier around Oasis and trying to adjust. You know, the, the, what do they call it? Denise, help me out the word. Is a childcare desert? Is that the official term? You had worked on some things, right? So I'm thinking about projects like that that we absolutely would be interested in. That right now current S C Cs seem to prohibit. And so I'd be interested in exploring. What options would look like that are very closely aligned with the desires of the community. And allow for us to address S C Cs there rather than a broad five year reduce fifty percent and then readdress the sundown clause.
All right. Anything else, folks, at the moment? All right, I, you know, I think the one thing I'll just, one comment I will make, this is a huge subject. It's a very deep, as Stephanie said and as Bryce just mentioned. This is a subject that touches on a lot of things. It touches on future development. I would like to recommend either we get a subcommittee of the of the council and or a committee. Of citizens and a council representative or two to explore this more deeply. I think. The, you know, the starting point, the carn that you've laid out is fantastic. I just think we need to really drill down. Because I think it's hugely important and if we can do that quicker, that'd be great. One suggestion. That has, I'm saying that having not spoken to Dan about staff kind of support and all that kind of thing. So. But we can get back on that. So if there's not anything else at the moment, I'd like to open public comment. And Sue, if you can raise, if you can. Have Mr. Suppy come on the line, that would be great.
So he is just on his phone, so here video wise, and I've asked him to unmute.
Okay, Mr. Suppy, when you unmute, we are ready for you. It looks like I've got, not seeing anything. Robert, are you, are you there? All right, well, while he comes on, I will mention at least, and we did mention this early, I'll mention what Robert's question was or Mr. Suppy's question. Regarding, again, it's regarding the transportation S T C policy. And it particularly has to do with the amount of money that is charged by under the transportation S T C. Up, wait, Robert, are you there?
I am.
All right, I will allow you to explain your comments yourself rather than me attempting.
Wonderful, thank you. I have some written stuff and based on what's been said, I've got more. Anyway, I'm Robert Suppy. And I got several points I'd like to make at the issue at hand. To start with. I think that S T Cs, when properly implemented, are an excellent tool for getting new development to pay for the burden it puts on the need for additional infrastructure. And I actually think that's a question the council has to ask itself is. Does it think it appropriate that new development pay for the cost it puts on infrastructure? Based on last meeting's decision, I don't think it does. As you must know, the process is fairly straightforward. The economic burden is calculated. And then is divided by the amount of development and that results in the recommended S T C fee. I assume you've all been through this before, so you understand the process. If the S T Cs are to be kept low, there are really only two methods to accomplish this. Become more efficient at providing the infrastructure. Or get somebody else to pay for it. You know, you can, you can cut S T Cs for one group, but you got to realize. We like to think about cutting things. What we don't realize is somebody's got to pay for it. So you've just raised it for other people. So that's what you need to think of. When you say, well, we want to give this type of organization a break, you're also saying we want all these other people to pay more, which is fine. Just don't ignore that reality. An example of of getting somebody else to pay for it is what I testified about earlier in public comments. This year, the budget committee and the council have approved having water rate payers pay for some of the cost of the burden on the water system that is imposed by new development. While this may keep water S T Cs lower, it seems entirely inappropriate. I'm rather surprised that the council thought otherwise. Yes, I understand there wasn't enough money in the S T C fund for water, even though, as the city engineer said. This has been known about for years. I think the idea that you say, oh, we're going to make somebody else pay for that is absurd. New growth should pay for the cost of new growth. Rate payers shouldn't have to pay for that. On the other hand, I provide written testimony about how the transportation into S T Cs inappropriately collect revenue. For portions of projects should not, that should not be expected to be funded by S T Cs. This is a made, change made in two thousand seventeen. Does the council think it is appropriate to include projects that, while legally eligible for S T C funded. Are not expected to be funded by S T Cs? I don't. In fact, the city engineer tonight said, I'm going to address that and nothing in her testimony said anything about. Why we should collect money, S T C money for parts of projects that though legal, aren't expected to be paid for by S T Cs. I've complained about this numerous times and never gotten any response from it. I am a supporter of appropriately calculated S T Cs. These are two, prior to this, are the two examples that Newburgh that don't fit that description. I understand that there are concerns that Newburgh S T Cs are too high. I think the council is not being given nearly enough information in tonight's R C A. And there is comparative information listed between Newburgh and four other cities. I think that if it's to be useful, the comparison should show each individual S T C to allow the council to identify where the differences occur. I would expect the council would also ask for an analysis of why specific S T Cs are so different between cities. Are there local reasons why it is more expensive to construct a water treatment plant, for example, in one city over another resulting in a higher S T C? Well, if that's the case, you're stuck. If it costs us more to do that, it costs us more, S T Cs are going to be higher. But you don't even have the information about whether water S T Cs are the reason it's higher. You just have totals. If not, the council should be pressing for answers for the specific reasons for the difference. If there's no reason that it should cost us more to produce water than another city. Then press staff as to why, why it does cost us more. I've heard counselors complain about the S T Cs in Newburgh, about the high S T Cs. That surprises me when noting that these rates must be approved by council. This is something the council must evaluate carefully every time master plans are approved, as well as when S T C rates are approved. If you're complaining about high S T C rates, you're complaining about actions that you have taken. S T C rates are your, your decision, not somebody else's. Is the concern that is being addressed strictly about S T Cs? Or is it really about the cost of new construction? If it's the latter, which I suspect it is, the council should ask for a similar comparison on other fees. I don't think the developers care much about one cost to the city over another. What matters is the total of S T Cs and other fees, not the specifics of which fee or charge is being paid. In other words, all a developer cares about is if I'm building a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, what's it going to cost me? If it's twenty thousand dollars in S T Cs and fifteen thousand dollars in other fees, that's thirty five thousand dollars. If the mix is otherwise. They don't care. They care what's the total. And I think you folks need to be asking about what the total is and what's going on with fees. If the council is serious about evaluating S T Cs. I encourage you to look carefully at how they are being calculated and how the individual S T Cs, not just the total, compared to other cities. If the council is serious about evaluating the cost of development, I encourage you to look at the other fees in addition to S T Cs. Lastly, I encourage the council not to just rubber stamp new S T C rates as they are recommended. And give a serious evaluation of whether or not they are appropriate. Trying to think if there's anything else. There was too much said and I didn't keep notes. Anyway, thank you and I hope you'll give careful consideration of those comments and. Yes, please, please make a wise decision.
Thank you, Mr. Suppy. Thank you. Thank you very much for your insightful comments as always. All right, do we have any other public comments, Sue?
No, we do not have any other public comments for the presentation on S T Cs.
Okay, I will close public testimony then. Other further questions, folks, or comments?
Mr. Mayor. At the risk of adding another committee, I, I would agree with you about particularly a committee that involves some citizens. To just make sure that we're looking at everything the way we need to be looking and having enough input. So. I'm, I'm not necessarily volunteering, but I do think that that's a good way to go. I, I wouldn't be opposed to doing it, but, you know.
What do you, Dan, what do you think? Is this, would that be doable, you think?
He, in terms of putting together a committee, I think we can definitely do that. I guess I would encourage that the council be active in that committee. And, you know, given what we just heard and, you know, the role the council has in in setting the S T Cs, I think it can, it can be. Challenging for a resident group to sort of try to divine, what are they thinking? What do they want us to do? And, you know, here are some options. It might be easier just to have that straight line of council being more invested and involved in decision making.
All right, why don't, let's see if we can get counselors interested. First off, I, I will volunteer. I'd be happy to. I'm fascinated by the subject. Anyone else? Anybody else interested? Think you might have time for a few meetings?
As long as my council rules meeting doesn't go more than three.
Barter, okay, all right, so.
And I would also do it if you have, but same, same thing, three meetings on that.
Yeah, all right. So why don't, why don't we look to doing that? And then if, you know, as, as. Council President Finley said, if, you know, if we, if we find that it would be good to bring other people in. I E. Mr. Suppy, who's very up on the subject, we could do that at a, you know, at a later date, bring in, you know, certainly developers, builders, other people that are, that really do this directly. But if we start with us, then we can maybe go from there. If that'll work. Sorry, Karen, if that's adding to your workload, I'm sorry. But I think it's hugely important and I think it's, you know, for the reasons mentioned, not just for the cost themselves, but for development and for affordability. So. Go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, just the one other part to have to consider is you're pulling the committee together as folks are representation from C P R D. Because I know that also plays into it and to Robert's comments as developers looking at overall sort of fees and charges. I think C P R D needs to be a part of the conversation.
Thanks. Just a point of clarification. We, we only collect the fees from C P R D. They set their own rates.
Right, right. Yeah, no, that makes sense to me, but, but, excuse me, and I think I said this in April. In my mind, we can have one conversation about S T Cs and try to do something. But if we're not involving C P R D who also is setting their own fees, then we may not actually solve the problem that we're trying to address. So I think having a concerted effort would, would make sense if that makes sense.
Yep, sounds good. Stephanie.
Do we need a motion for the committee and to appoint the three counselors?
Or do we have to bring that back, Sue?
We need to bring it back.
Yeah, we have to bring it back. So we'll bring it back at our next meeting and then we'll get on it. It's a, it's a topic that is of interest, I know, to a lot of people in the community as well. So we'll get on it. So there we go. All right, anything else on S T Cs? All right, let's go on into eight B in this resolution, twenty twenty one thirty seven sixty three, a state of emergency for COVID nineteen to the, due to the Delta variant.
So I think we were going to tag team this one, so just going to pull up the information. But I think I may have provided a little bit of it in the city manager's report related to the face coverings and the mask requirements. But we had had a state of emergency prior and had allowed that to lapse as we sort of saw. I think we all saw nationally, internationally, the improvement in COVID activity. That resulted in in sort of the reopening. Uh, that resulted in, in sort of the reopening of, of Oregon and many other states. Uh, I think as we're seeing that, uh, change with the Delta variant and, and the increase in cases. I believe there were over two thousand cases reported today, uh, by OHA. Um, you know, just seeing that spike, we are looking to take precautions again. Um, you know, we're not looking to do, we're looking to, to have the face coverings as of today in city facilities. We're not necessarily looking to, uh, reinstate all of the prior regime of, of, uh, steps. And, and, you know, we're certainly trying to work with folks to encourage vaccinations and, and all those things as well. But, um, just one of the things that made sense, given the, uh, potential for extraordinary measures, uh, to have the, uh, state of emergency re-declared, I suppose, or, or a new one declared. I'm not sure if that, which is more appropriate in phrasing this. Because we did again, we allowed one to lapse. So this is a new consideration. But in light of the Delta variant, uh, we'll bring this forward for consideration. Um, so that we can essentially have a little bit more flexibility as staff. And so there's a fairly long, uh, list of all the actions that we've gone through over the last year and a half. And, and I know, uh, some in council are experiencing that a little more closely than others. But, uh, you know, just the, the continued, uh, what feels like, I think it's been described as a roller coaster, as a, uh, yo-yo, as all kinds of other things. Unfortunately, I feel like we're, we're kind of back to a point where we need to take some precautions. So with that, I think for your consideration is a, a, a state of emergency resolution.
All right. And the, the resolution runs until October eighteenth. I, I guess that's because that corresponds with a council meeting.
It actually, it does, but it's also, uh, corresponds with what we're hearing as far as the, uh, peak of the Delta variant. And so just trying to be mindful of not an, an open-ended forever and ever kind of, uh, state of emergency. But something that we can, similar to the urban renewal issue, we can monitor and, and have an appropriate, uh, touch point to either extend or, or rescind it at that point. But, uh, it ties to the council meeting, but also ties to some of the, uh, reports that we're receiving when we just are trying to keep an eye on this.
All right. Um, and it says here, the assessment is, uh, helps place, helps the city to manage its resources, including remote work arrangements for staff.
Exactly. Yep.
Thanks. All right. Any other questions, folks, on this? All right. I'll entertain a motion if you are so inclined.
Mr. Mayor. I move that we renew the state of emergency for COVID nineteen until October the eighteenth.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, at least with a second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your left hands. And that's unanimous, Sue. All right. Moving on to item, the RCA resolution twenty twenty one thirty seven sixty two, discussion of referral to November second, twenty twenty one election. Um, again, back to the question of urban renewal. All right. I think I got a couple of people on this one. Uh, Dan, Doug, um, and Jane.
We, we agreed to arm wrestle over this. So, um, I'll start and maybe we'll all address it. But, um, this is, as previously discussed, sort of, uh, the actual discussion around, uh, whether the council would like to, uh, refer the urban renewal question to voters. We've got some information, uh, prepared. If that is something desired, the reason that we're bringing it forward, in addition to the request or the stipulation that the county commissioners placed on their approval of, uh, uh, the plan at this point was also, uh, we're looking at the election calendar and, and we've got a, a limited window in order to, to place something on the, the November second ballot. November second would be preferable in terms of what we talked about prior. The, uh, maintenance of the, the schedule in essence, you know, being able to, to stay on track with what is defined currently as urban renewal boundaries. Uh, with the plan itself and, uh, trying to, to begin the process, assuming a positive vote of, uh, Newburgh, city of Newburgh voters. I think there were some question as to what the boundary would be in the commissioners meeting, but we did land on city only. Uh, but making sure that, uh, if we did get an affirmative, that we could, could keep on track. And so the, the desire would be to, to place something on the November second ballot if, if approved.
Okay. Um, let's see. Um, anyone else? Any other questions, folks, on this? All right. Um, you know, as I understand it, um, so the ballot measure is, is one way to do this. Um, I think John Bridges, the chair of our urban renewal advisory committee, suggested another, which would be to go through with the annexations of certain of that property at the riverfront. And I suppose the, the other would be to proceed, well, we'd have to do the annexations in order to proceed with the county. Could, could someone give us pros and cons of those or if, and if there's another approach, um, that would be great.
I think, you know, I take a swing at it and defer, but I think there probably are other approaches in the sense of maybe some blended approaches. But I think in terms of expedience, uh, the, the benefit of, you know, going to the voters is certainly, we have done the, the work. Uh, over the last six years, we've done, uh, the work the right way. We've, uh, done, uh, the work with the mindset of, of creating prosperity in, in Newburgh and, and supporting job creation. And, you know, these are infrastructure projects and largely in, in those kinds of things that will stimulate growth as intended by urban renewal. I think there's no harm in, in the, uh, question going to voters. Um, you know, obviously there's a referendum process as part of that, uh, urban renewal statute and, and folks could put it on the ballot if they chose to. Um, I, you know, there's, there's time, I guess, again, given the November second. Uh, certainly, uh, it adds an, an additional layer. And I think John was very articulate and he's been through a lot more of this than I. That, uh, in Newburgh, we've had a history of, of attempts at this and, and been unsuccessful based on, um, some of the, the confusion, I suppose, as to, uh, you know, a complicated topic and, and, you know, maybe some misrepresentations. I won't characterize what I wasn't here for, but, um, you know, certainly there's risk with an election. Um, you know, and certainly, uh, given the boundary, uh, you know, we could redraw the boundary to include the, property would be annexed and, and sort of have the city boundary rather than having it be a wider, uh, inclusive of the, the county as it stands now, the fifty-two, I believe. Doug said fifty-four, fifty-two acres, uh, at the end of this process of annexation. We can exclude those, those things. It will take time and it'll cost another, another year and more money of, uh, more city money in terms of staff time and, and resources to, consultant resources to, to redraw the boundaries. It's a, you know, just in a black and white sense, you know, extending it out adds cost. Certainly there's cost to an election and it, that's referred in here as potentially sixty to sixty-five thousand, based on our last available information. And, and that we, we don't want till after, uh, the election as to what our actual bill would be. So, I mean, there's costs regardless, I suppose. Um, at this point, I believe Doug, you know, shut up, I guess, because I'm speaking for you and, and you can speak for yourself. But, uh, we had put in, uh, a one point nine million dollars, uh, to date, um, in, in getting to this point. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things there, there's cost and we spent a good amount of money.
Dan, Dan is correct. Uh, we shared last Thursday at our meetings that we've invested with city funds and grant funds. Based upon that setting the stage slide you saw earlier this evening, that was over one point nine million dollars, not including staff time. So we're well over two million dollars over this six and a half years to get to this point. We've heard repeatedly through those different projects, you know, urban renewal as a tool, as an economic development tool. Uh, and that's what led us to have council, you have a goal. You directed us to do a feasibility study. We did. It was accepted. We moved to the next stage, prepared the plan and the report. The, I think, Mayor, going back to some of your question, then if I get to rambling, please just cut me off. Just cut me off. An election, Dan hit it on, it has a cost, you know, sixty, sixty-five thousand, could be seventy, depends on who's all on the ballot. Um, that's there. We have the short window to get a ballot title, uh, prepared, which was worked on over the weekend. Gets to a vote. My preference would be to not have the council make a decision on an ordinance. Until, if you go down the path of vote, until you have the vote. So we have a clear, much clearer understanding where the voters are at. Um, my concerns, if you adopted something sooner, is this, it would send a negative tone. It's like, what do you mean? They just, they did it anyway. Um, looking at the schedule and Dan and I've communicated is that we think it's doable. If there is a vote, to be able to get through the necessary steps. Uh, required to have everything done and all the noticing that needs to be done. And things to the county assessor for what they need to do by the end of the calendar year to be in a position to start receiving revenues. In fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three. The other option of going back and redrawing the boundary. Uh, there is a cost with that as well. And so I talked with my consultants. Bless them. They worked over the weekend for me. They were right there with me. Is now there's additional cost for a surveyor to redraw the boundary and the new legal description. Uh, there's some additional costs for Elaine and the sub consultants to redo the financials, redo the plans and so forth. And so I'm going to, my numbers, talking with them were probably an upward range of, you know, another twenty thousand dollars of, of services to do that particular work. Could be less. But it, it, it adds time. So even if you go to an election, and I shared this with Dan, and the voter said, yes, in statute, there's still a provision after the council adopts an ordinance. There is a referendum process. Um, if it gets exercised or not, I can't tell you. If they've already voted once, would they vote twice? Would somebody take that attempt? If you go down the path of finish annexations, which we'd also want to finish the annexation for the real estate that we are in process of trying to purchase. Uh, that's what gets us to the fifty-two acres that would be outside of the city limits. Um, so. But, you know, you basically got that twenty twenty-two calendar year. So we don't want to jump immediately. There's some other pieces we want to fill in those gaps. Uh, you do all of that. We go back through the confer consult process again. It does remove the county having to approve the plan because it doesn't include any county land. Go through that confer consult process. You would have to consider any comments and recommendations that come from agencies. And if you concluded you wanted to adopt an ordinance, you could, you still then go through all the notification. You still got the referral process at the end of it all. But in that latter way, you, you lose that one year. So as we are doing as we are supposed to be doing to work on economic development, you know, time is an issue. We are quickly going towards a mill site that will be completely torn down. And I don't know what happens then. Is that, is at play? We have things going on downtown, you know? Those are at play. I think I shared on, was someone in the last week is like, I think, you know, we've got this kind of two-year window. As we're coming out of COVID, the economy is starting to pick up again. Things will happen and then it will start to level off, you know? We always go through economic cycles. Right now we're in a cycle where there's lots of interest and inquiries. We're looking for jobs. I mentioned before, we're looking for, you know, three hundred to four hundred jobs just on the mill site alone. I think I've shared with a number of people is that we're looking at a minimum investment of buildings and equipment of a hundred and fifty million dollars plus on that one hundred acres. Um, and urban renewal, I'm kind of getting on a, so urban renewal is that partnership tool that, to work with the development, to get that investment and to get those jobs. So we're at that election piece, you know? Do we go that path or we do something different?
All right. I'm going to, I hate to do this to your staff, but I'm going to do it. Um, what is your recommendation?
You know, I think if I, as an individual and making a recommendation and, and others, certainly you're entitled to an opinion. I'm looking at expedience, uh, you know, the COVID recovery is, I think we, we're hoping that it's coming. Yeah. And, and as Doug started to allude to the economic, uh, wave of, you know, investment from the federal government and from the, some of the stimulus. I think we're going to see, um, an opportunity, a window. And, you know, I, I want to make sure that we and Newburgh are able to, to take advantage of it, you know? And I think we've talked about recovery of, and of those jobs and, and, you know, all of the activity at the mill. I mean, I think we're at that moment. So I guess I would just say, let's try to, to give ourselves the maximum, uh, window of that moment, if that makes sense. By doing it sooner than, than waiting. That would be my, my recommendation personally.
Go, that means go with the, with the election.
That does.
Doug? Yeah, same thing.
I'm inclined, you know, we've been put in a position to, to ask for the vote out of sequence of state statute. I have issues with that, but I'd rather get the vote done. So that we can respond to the activities that we've already got in play in, in discussion, you know, for the past year plus. Delay could cause things to walk away.
Thank you. Uh, Bright.
This question's for James. Just to make sure I understood clearly, because this is not like two and a half hours ago-ish. If we don't go to a vote, it could be something that potentially goes to court. And if we quote unquote lose, then it would go, it would be pushed back down to the county level, whether it probably requires sort of vote, thereby pushing things back even more. Is that correct? Ish?
Um, ish. So it's, it's, without getting kind of too heavy or detailed into strategy. If, if we were to just advance without, you know, just kind of ignoring the condition, you know, the, the county could come back and, um, raise that kind of improperly overstepped their, um, uh, the condition on their vote. Of course, our counter to that would be that the condition itself was, it was an overstep of county authority. And we'd have to, um, you know, essentially be in a process that's the equivalent of appealing, um, that decision and challenging the, the, the correct category of decision that, 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 that the county had there. Uh, if we lose, obviously we get kicked back. If we win, um, you know, the, the courts can do a variety, kind of appellate bodies can do a variety of things. But, but, you know, remand is very possible, which basically sends it back down. So that, that creates the same timeline, you know, timeline challenges that we've, um, been discussing. And then of course, um, you know, nobody likes to talk about the legal fees, but there's, there's a cost component there as well, right? So.
Stephanie.
I'm really conflicted about this. Um, you know, I trust the staff and what their recommendation is, and I think they're making lemonade out of lemons. And so I, you know, I support what they think is the best way to go. But I'll be honest, when I say that I think the board of commission overstepped, um, grossly on this. And that they, the argument against doing this was based on statements that were made by a commissioner that were false. Um, and, you know, I'll be blunt in saying, you know, I told them last week, the time is of the essence. If we've not learned anything over the last two years with COVID, is that we should be setting up our community to succeed. Rather than reacting to when circumstances come that we can't feed people, we can't house people, we can't give people jobs. And so this staff has worked diligently to do those things, to make this community succeed and have those things in place. And frankly, I'm, I'm pretty offended, um, that the commissioners wouldn't take into consideration the things that, um, our staff has said they've done. Um, that our community has said that they want. Given that, I also think that the community should have a say in these things. And I think, you know, like I said before, is that there are more than one way to have the community have a say. One way is certainly to put it on a ballot. The other way is to do all the things that the staff has done. They pulled people in, um, to have conversations about this over the last six years. And I think they've done a really good job of making sure that the community has been involved in this process all along and that the. And that the, the, you know, they really looked hard at what this urban renewal would look like. It looks different than in some other cities around Oregon that have done this because we are looking at a mill site um, where we're not displacing people that are being housed there or things like that, and that we're bringing in industry, you know? Frankly, Commissioner Bershauer didn't have family that lost their jobs at the mill. She doesn't have a stake in this community and it shows by how she treated the staff that brought this to her. So I'm, I'm for sure conflicted because I think we need to do something quickly um, with this area. And that we need to bring some jobs and some housing and some other things to our community.
There you go. Elise.
Um, question for James. So could we simultaneously hypothetically decide to continue on without going to a vote without consideration of the commissioners' contingency of a, of election? While, you know, assuming they take it up, the legal change, can we simultaneously continue with our, with the project? Or does, when we get put on notice that they have taken it up, does it halt the process?
I mean, if, you know, as far as kind of advancing in, in the immediate term, I guess you could, as, as far as whether there would be like some sort of stay put on the process or not, um, I'd have to look. I'd want the opportunity to take a look back at the, at the statute. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about what the response would be, not necessarily in the, in, in the immediate term, but if we advance and then there's a, there's a challenge like from the county, right? And we come back with, with our, our counters, if you will, what the, what the appellate body would do. I'd want to take a closer look at this, at the statute um, to provide some more detail there.
Hold on.
Yeah, please.
I do think that it's a statement to be made that we're willing to consider that, that we, we as an eye, I think, except Council Finley just stated, feel it's an overreach. And that I'm interested to know what legal ground we can stand on. Um, and if we were to explore that option, how much time we need to explore that option that would not further delay the process? I totally understand that Doug and Dan's statement, but I do want it to go on the record, at least from, from me, that the decision that the commissioners made is bottom line going to cost Newburgh residents thousands of dollars with whichever, whatever path we go.
And that, or councillor Yarno Hallman, that, that guidance, um, you know, we would, we would circle back and it would be provided in, in very short order. We understand time is of the essence here with respect to the, the deadlines, especially with the election deadline. So uh, we could circle back quickly on that, but prepared to, prepared to dig a little deeper. It's, it's a very, if I'm just frank with the council, it's, it's a decision by the county was unusual to say the, to say the least. And so uh, it's just not something that, that's really been vetted out in, in, in the courts or in front of other bodies.
Elise, did you have a follow on?
Yeah, follow on. Um, I put staff on the, on the spot, but I am curious to know um, if commissioners or county reached out in the six-year process, giving any indication that this would be of concern. Prior to Thursday's meeting.
I can say through development of the feasibility study all the way up uh, until we started the confer, consult confer process and the parallel county having to approve the plan. No comments.
All right. Uh, Stephanie, did you have a?
Yeah, I have another legal question. If we were to put this on the ballot and go forward that way, could we still look into the legality of what the commission did? And if we did that, could we require or ask the courts to have them pay for both the election and our attorney fees associated with it?
So the, as far as proceeding to look into the legality of the county's actions, yes, we could, we could look at that simultaneously. Um, in addition to pursuing, having the items submitted um, the ballot, the whether a court, whether a quarter or any sort of appellate body would award damages. That is a trickier question, uh, frankly, and I, I, I just can't really say definitively one way or the other, but um, you know, we could certainly operate under the direction of the council to, to pursue those as damages and, and make that, and take that position.
Okay. Other comments or questions, folks? Go ahead, Elise.
So could we simultaneously pursue James exploring what he does? And then if we were to motion to bring it to a vote, could we rescind that based on James' response? Or could we delay a vote on this until next council meeting after James has more information back to us of what implications he thinks that that could lead to?
I, I don't think we can because of the election deadline, can we? Isn't, isn't it on the 13th?
Yeah, one of the issues that you have there is that we have a deadline that a ballot title has to be submitted to the local election official by August 13th. So this is essentially unless you called a special meeting, this is your last opportunity to provide us direction, which is the reason for the resolution that's in front of you this evening in order to meet that deadline. If we miss, if we miss the deadline of August 13th, then we are basically in a situation of a one-year delay.
All right, let's, uh, so we can continue the discussion. Why don't we get a motion if we can, if someone would make a motion? Um, and then we can go, we can go from there. Uh, as presented, as suggested by staff, that it would be for an election to put a ballot measure on uh, the November 2nd um, elect for the November 2nd election. Anyone?
I, I'm going to go ahead and move that we do that only because staff recommended that. I, I, I think it's terrible what the board of commission does, but I will move that we adopt resolution 2021 dash 3762.
Do we have a second?
Which option? Option one?
So to go to the ballot, yeah, to go to the ballot. Yep. Was that a second then Denise? No. Yes. Okay. Denise did second. All right. Now let's go further discussion. All right. Um, I too was at the county comm, go ahead, Elise. We'll let you go.
Sorry. So if Doug, Dan and Jane, well, I guess I'll say Doug and Dan thought that it was a possibility that council would be interested to exploring challenging this legally, would that change your recommendation? Since you didn't have that as one of your options that you provided to us.
I think we, we considered that that could happen. And, and honestly, I, I, I think it can still happen simultaneously. I, I think I would preserve the option to go to the election and to continue move forward. Um, and pursue the potential for legal, you know, whether it's damages or, or just clarification. I mean, I think James is, is carefully stating the fact that the action, the, this is conditioned on his partner uh, who has 30 plus years of uh, uh, experience in this arena has never seen this occur. And uh, you know, I think that there's probably some opportunity to explore the legality of that, but I think the rea, the reality ends up being, I would still recommend moving forward the project to completion, just again, based on the timing, the, you know, the underlying purpose of doing the work um, free of, of the other issues, if that's at all possible, which I understand is hard.
Sorry, just one clarifying question. Can um, could we decide on the election tonight and come back at the next meeting and discuss whether or not we wanted to pursue something legally? Is that a possibility?
I don't see why not.
Okay. Um, all right. Uh, Elise, did you have a, a question?
I do. So if we're going down this route of an election, I'm like this, this, this issue is going to put me over the top. Um, if we're going down the issue of an election, are we like full bore, ready to, you know, launch a marketing campaign that we don't have staffing or resources to do to explain this properly? In a way that our community, like a common person like myself can understand and digest in two months period, because that's my major concern.
Remember too, like you said, we, uh, staff cannot, right? Once it becomes a ballot measure, it's, it's on to the public. So yes, and I, and Jules Yeah, Jules mentioned it as well. It's a tricky thing. I will hearken back to the Thursday meeting. The commissioners discussed how complex the subject was, right? Uh, again, we discussed how complex it was. My concern in the talk about a legal thing is not just for this, but I am concerned about future overreach because there's such a thing as local control. My concern about local control is being impinged upon by this. I'm also further concerned that the statements made on that during that Thursday meeting did not check out in fact. So again, I don't think there's any reason that this would possibly fail, given the lack of public comment that we had up to and including tonight. We had one comment tonight in support from the chair of the committee. So I do not believe there's any way, but again, false narratives come out all the time, as we well know, that is, it's damaging. I will put it this way, if this thing were to fail to a citizen's vote that was brought on by the county commissioners, I would say they who brought this up are anti-jobs and to a certain degree anti-Newburgh. And I'm sorry, but that's the way it comes across. I would further ask if you requested this, required this and it boxed a bunch of other elected officials into a corner that is very difficult to get out of, you should pay for it. You should pay for the election, for the cost of the election. And that's the way I believe that it should be handled. And that's my feeling. Otherwise I'm um, yeah, but, but I understand. Elise.
Yeah, I absolutely stand by all of the comments you just made and specifically for the reason that this is not the first time that they have overreached. And I have been very quiet around all public health comments that have been made this entire pandemic, but now it's in Newburgh and I absolutely am not going to be okay with not taking this up in some legal form. Even if we bring it to a vote, because I am not scared of a vote, we can rally people and we can on our own figure out how to explain this and spend our own dollars to figure that out. But I absolutely am going on the record that I want to pursue legal action with this.
I think, you know, the thing we can say, it is complex until we, till we drill it down to say um, that the tax, your taxes will not increase. It is a stimule, it's a stimulus for infrastructure and consequently jobs largely downtown and the riverfront, which we haven't seen for a hundred years. That's it. So anybody has any questions? I mentioned it earlier. Anybody who's on the call who may see this later, anybody has any question at all about what it might do to their tax bill, their services, any of that? Please contact us. It's not to be melodramatic, but this is largely the future of Newburgh that we're staring at right now. I'm sorry to say that, but it is the area that we have industrial land. It is the only area. So, all right. Um, I think at this point, I think we're going to probably just have to call, get, get ourselves to a vote, folks, on what we want to do on this election item. And I, you know, let's uh, let's do it unless anybody's got any other questions. Sue, why don't we go roll call if you don't mind?
Mr. Mayor, this is a vote for the resolution number 2021 3762. A resolution calling for an election in the city of Newburgh on November 2nd, 2021 to consider approval of the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan and approving the ballot title and explanatory statement. Um, councillor McBride is absent. Councillor Cofield.
Uh, hold on one second, Sue. Sorry. Elise, did you have a, a question?
Is it possible to ha, to add an explanation with the vote on this, we've given the situation and we've talked about this before in the past with council? When there, there are these contentious votes to give a questions as to yes or no, why?
Yep. If it, yeah, if you can, if you can give a statement along with it, that'd be great. Thank you. Thanks, uh, Elise. All right. Ready when you are, Sue.
You want me to suspend the vote or continue?
No, let's continue to vote, but people will re, re responding for the rationale for their vote.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councillor Cofield.
I will vote yes. Rationale uh, being that I trust the leadership and expertise of our staff. Uh, and I also think it's too risky um, to not move forward. Uh, I would be aligned with what Rick and Elise and Stephanie said about designing a follow-up to challenge the legality of it, but at this point to challenge it by directly not putting up to a vote, I think puts things in a riskier position. Um, and ultimately I'm sitting here asking myself, like, do I believe in Newburgh and trust the people to be able to vote well? Uh, and ultimately I want to say yes. And this vote of yes is putting the trust into the voters to make a right decision, trusting that we did everything above board, as Dan said. Um, and that ultimately people understand how uh, significant this is for our community.
Councillor, you're Noel Hallman.
I'll also vote yes. And my rationale being very similar to what Bryce just stated and that I really do believe that of the six-year process that the staff put in to this project um, and plan has had countless opportunities for citizen input. And I truly believe that we have come to this place. And prior to this last year, this has been a completely nonpartisan conversation with Republicans and Democrats known in the community, fighting for this work. Um, some of which have recently spoken and I absolutely trust the committee that has been put forward um, to give us this recommendation.
Councillor Martinez Plancarte.
I vote yes as well. Um, again, I trust their staff, Doug, Dan and folks who have given us guidance. And I think this is going to be an opportunity for us to really engage with the community, especially folks who are not currently caught up with what's going on. And hopefully we make the best of the next few months. I trust our constituents to make the best decision. But I think there's a bigger question on, you know, overstepping boundaries and how we're going to deal with that in the future. So those are my two cents. Thank you.
Mayor Rogers.
Um, I too will vote yes for the, the reasons stated grudgingly. Yes, just because again, as mentioned, um, but I trust, I trust the work of staff. I trust the work of the advisory committee. I trust the rep, the information and the knowledge of the taxing districts who have all supported this, or at least no comment. Um, and I, as you all mentioned as well, I trust the residents and the residents of Newburgh are looking for uh, family wage jobs. They're looking for development of the downtown and the riverfront, and I trust that they will, will do the right thing and we'll get this through.
Councillor Bacon.
I love going last because everyone said all the good stuff, but I am voting yes. Um, I do believe it's an overreach and a dangerous overreach, but time here is an issue and we're gonna power through and hopefully we will uh, come up with a legal answer on why it's an overreach and um, be able be able to do something to change the future, but I am also voting yes grudgingly.
Councillor Finley.
And I will also vote yes. And I, all of the, my fellow councillors have said it really well. Um, but time is of the essence. We need jobs. We need development. We need um, industrial land. And that's the only reason I'm voting yes on this. Um, but otherwise I am looking to see what our legal repercussions are going to be.
Okay. I think that's it, Sue. It looks like it passed unanimously. Um, thank you all. This is uh, not always easy. So thank you all. Um, do we have anything? Where did I lose my agenda to? Do we have anything else for the good of the order? I think council business committee reports is the last I got. If anybody's got anything.
I'll give a public health announcement.
Please do.
I just want to say that um, shout out to our public health team. I feel like they don't get enough praise for the incredible amount of work that they do. And not gotten the level of support that I would um, indebted and owed from common folk like myself that benefit from their services and I And a huge thank you to the city of Newburgh for facilitating a stable vaccine space at the library. It's been a really great partnership with Providence and city of Newburgh. And then also looking forward to the fall. You know, I think I was on a week of PTO and came back to a two hundred and twelve percent increase in cases in one week. So this is, we are in unprecedented increase in cases, at least in my world. And, you know, I just met Providence, but, um, you know, super important that we follow the direction of what's been outlined by CDC and OHA, but more specifically, how we can keep our our little kids safe. Because I think all of us know that, I mean, I want my kids back in school in person. I am pro mask, but God, I want my kids back in person. And I just, I don't know how we're going to get there if we continue down this path. So if you need help with finding a vaccine or if you need any information at all, reach out.
Anyone else? You know, you mentioned the the frontline workers, and I I don't, I don't often do this, but I I will. There, sometimes we have these unsung heroes in our community that just do things that you oftentimes don't even know about or you just barely hear about. And and we had a case of this recently, a gentleman by the name of Rick Wright. I don't know if anyone knows Rick, real active with the veterans. He he passed away, his service was this last week. And he was, he and a couple of other veterans formed an organization called Veterans Helping Veterans. And basically, for for no reward, for nothing else, they would go around and build ramps and do repairs for their fellow veterans in this community. I, they and also work with the Wood Ministry and all of this. But just, I I think, again, we talked about being a volunteer community, and I want to underscore that again in the person of Rick Wright. And what he did, I last count, he, they and his couple of guys had built something on the order of eighty ramps in our community, which is fantastic. So, again, that's Newburgh, that's what we got to remember. That's how we do it in this burg, folks, that's how we do it. So Rick, rest in peace, my friend. All right, anybody else, anything else? Staff, thank you. I I I cannot, cannot praise you enough for your professionalism. It's it's been fantastic to witness and thank you, right?
Have the best.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, anything else? All right, y'all be good. Watch out for going on PTO, Elise, because that's what happens. You get out of town and then cases go crazy, so be careful. All right, we'll see y'all, be good, have a nice evening.